Six thirty, we'll call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda.
So moved and?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aho, unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the vote health insurance elected officials. I do remember we discussed this at length, last week, I guess, was it? Last week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago. And we postponed it for tonight. I don't know if there's a lot of discussion necessary to get on it, so I'll...
Mr. Chairman, last time I made a motion just to get things, get things going one way or another. You want a motion here?
Good.
Move the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 32b, Section 2d, vote a policy of not extending the benefits noted in the aforementioned law to elected officials with the following provisions. One, that the elected position of town clerk is exempt from this policy. Two, that any elected official currently receiving benefits be grandfathered without any loss of coverage as long as they serve their elected term. And three, that should an elected official have a lapse in service and then return to elective office, he or she shall not be able to enroll and receive said coverage. This policy change will be effective Saturday, May 8, 2010.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
Well, just a clarification for those that weren't here is, at this point in time, elected officials will not be able to get, I think there's four, health insurance, dental insurance, there's a life, a small life policy, but essentially that cost would be a savings of about, is it almost $10,000 per town?
Further discussion? Hearing them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aho, unanimous. Next item, meet the applicants. We have some positions open on different boards and there's our policy. Marilyn Johnson, beautification. How are you? Would you just come up and say hello and, if you just, for the record, just give your name. Sit down, sit down and explain.
My name is Marilyn Johnson. I'm forward to serving on beautification. I'm presently a volunteer, a doctorate, and right at the one or two address that I'm possible. And I want to get more involved.
Great. So you're familiar with what they do and you do it, so.
Yep.
Okay. What we're gonna do is we're gonna just meet the applicants now. Later on, we'll make the appointments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next, I believe, is Nathaniel Green here for constable. He's the one that's not able to be present constable, but we have another constable application.
Mr. Farhat?
Yep. I'm just looking for it here. Are you with us here?
Mr. Green had many letters of recommendation.
He did, many. That's what I was going through. Andre, could you come up and just, for the record, give your name and you're familiar with many, many of the members of the board are familiar with you, but if you just give your name and the constable position?
I'm Andre Farhat. I've been in the town since 1968. Three kids, and hope to stay here until the end.
We hope that's for a long time.
That's a long time from now, Andre.
I hope it's a long, a long time for both of us.
Thank you.
Okay. Basically, that's, Andre, that's it. We'll be making, let's, board has any questions?
Well, no, again, a number of recommendation letters supported the appointment as well. Excellent.
So we'll be making later on tonight, making the appointments.
Okay. And how, what, do you notify me or?
Kim will notify you within a couple of days.
Or you can watch on Channel 10, of course, later tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a one-day wine and malt beverage license application. Appalachian, how are you?
Fine, Joe.
Good, thank you. Just come up and if you just give us a, one minute.
Sure. I'm Steve Sonnenberg. I'm a resident of 44 Lawson.
Terrace, and I'm here tonight for the application for one-day wine and malt liquor beverage license for an Appalachian Service Project fundraiser, which is to be held March 20th from 7 to 11 at St. Mary's Parish Center. The Appalachian Service Project, I think as many of you are familiar with, is a volunteer program that's nationally known, that sends volunteers to Appalachia area of the country, one of the poorest countries in, poorest areas in the country, and they do home repairs. It not only benefits the people that receive the home repairs, but also gives a sense of volunteerism, compassion for others, and community service to the young individuals that make this trip every year. We've been doing it for several years. We send anywhere from 30 to 60 students down by bus. They spend 10 days working on various projects, and then the next group that arrives takes over where they left off. So I've had, my oldest son has gone down twice. My youngest, next son has been there once and is going again this year, and they truly do come back with a sense of appreciation for what they have here in our community, seeing what others have to go through the struggles through their daily lives.
Great honor. Yeah, that's... Thanks.
Just to confirm, my babysitter went a couple of years ago, and she could not say enough positive things about it. They work really, really hard, but they get a ton out of the experience, so.
And I think, just to add, the vast majority of the kids that go one year volunteer to go again.
Oh, that's great.
When do they, when do they go, Steve? April vacation or?
No, they usually go right after school gets out for 10 days, right around 4th of July.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're usually back in time for 4th of July or shortly thereafter, so tremendous program, and we appreciate your support.
Oh, that's fantastic. Son, you want a motion? Love one. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a one-day wine and malt beverages license to Appalachian Service Project for fundraising event to be held at St. Mary's Parish Center, 1 Kent Street on Saturday, March 20, 2010, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second. Thank you.
Sonny, where can they get tickets for this?
Contact me, you can contact my wife, you know, tickets are available.
Great. It's March 20th.
March 20th, Saturday night.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Motion and second being a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Presentation and a vote on the sticker committee. A group has met recently and has put a lot of work in it. I think you'll see, we were all given, I believe, a packet on the sticker, work done by the sticker committee. Who's gonna make this presentation?
Tricia.
I think the whole committee can come up and...
Sure, you can all come up. Everyone who's on that committee. Thanks for the, for the work done on it. Who would like to be the spokesman?
I'll just give an overview, and then, as it says sort of in the introduction to the report, is the board chart to me last fall when we had the issues with the seaweed removal, just sort of just look in total at our beach sticker revenue and really what was needed, all the beaches throughout the town in terms of ongoing maintenance or enhancements. So I pulled this committee together of folks that you see in front of you, and we had a few meetings, and everybody did research on their own and then brought it back to the meeting. And we didn't only look at the beach stickers and the revenue, but also all the expenses for the beaches out of rec, DPW, police, the selectmen's office in terms of administration and issuance, how the system was working now, what was working, what wasn't, what could be changed, and then what do we need in terms of not only routine or ongoing maintenance at the beaches, but capital reinvestment that if we had funds to go forward, how we can continue to make that an amenity for the people in town that go. So what you see in the report is extensive analysis, I think, of what other towns charge, not only for sticker fees, but for parking. The chief reviewed rules and regulations around that. Jane looked at our possibility to do online payments for that, and also our current meal and program. The offshoot of all that was, we provide so many different ways to obtain, not ways to obtain stickers, but there was a fee for residents, there was a fee for Marshfield residents, there was a replacement fee, there was a fee for a second vehicle, there was a fee for a lost sticker, or if you had a car accident, and it was creating a tremendous amount of additional staff time just to keep track of all the fees. So what you have is the recommendation, that's the consensus of the committee, pretty much unanimous, I think, for 99% of them, and it was really judgment-free. So what you see is really what the committee's recommended. Obviously, the board has the discretion at their pleasure to do something different, but this is what all these heads here sort of prevailed to bring forth to the board.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work that went into it. A lot of times, we make decisions on fees based on nowhere near the information that you peoples provided, so thank you. Open it up to the board. I think, Tricia, before we do that, if I could ask one question. If we vote the recommendations of this report, how will that affect the budget?
In two ways. One is the currently recommended town administrative budget for the rec department has a $13,000 reduction, 10% of the lifeguard seasonal salaries, which the recreation commission, as Jennifer noted when she came before you, would address. If the board adopted the recommendations, one of the major recommendations is to create a revolving fund for the sticker fee. So essentially, that money would be restored in the warrant to Jennifer's, and it would, but the housekeeping of it would sort of be reconciled because we'd actually be moving the $120,000 out of that line item to staff the revolving fund.
So that would, the lifeguards would be funded if we accept this?
Right. Now, proportionally, if you want to include some other things in there in terms of the itemization of costs across different departments, like printing and postage, seaweed removal, that's in DPW in the selectmen's budget, I mean, town administrator's budget. The other thing is it affects our local receipts because we're taking that money from the sticker fees and out of that line item now, but it would be manageable because we're moving those other costs out of the other budgets, too. And Mary can speak in more detail to that, but we looked at that very closely today. So it wouldn't offset, you know, really impact our local receipts in terms of...
You don't, you don't see it as a problem with local receipts?
Not...
No, not for, not for next year, and not for this year, actually, either, for the rest of this year, because if we do a fee increase, I just would use the difference between a fee increase coming in, what would be reserved for FY 11 and what's for this year.
Good. Wood?
So with these changes, they say for FY 11, so what would you be doing coming up? Would you be phasing in or?
Well, we have to create the revolving fund at town meeting. So she'll have what's in there for FY 10, and then when we appropriate the budget for FY 11, the motion would have what Mary was alluding to, the reconciliation.
This is a great report, you guys. I mean, it's really wonderful to have it all here, and several times the words "true costs" came in because it's been so hard through the years of just looking at every different departmental budget, and, you know, the beaches are so central to everything we do in town, but to get all the money here under one umbrella and the true cost is just fantastic, and this is a, this is a great document. I commend you and thank you, Tricia, and everybody here for doing this. It's really, it's very impressive. I have two very short questions about it. On page 11, where you're talking about the increasing the tickets in the waterfront zones, does that include, where exactly are the waterfront zones? I remember when you came before us a couple of years ago, I was surprised that some areas were waterfront zones and some areas that I would think would be waterfront zones were not. So roughly, where are the, are we talking Front Street, too?
Yes.
Okay.
That was added, I think in 2007.
Yeah.
Pretty much the waterfront zones are anywhere east of Hadley Road, Sand Hills area, first, second, Third Cliff, Hummerock, Cold Park Way, and the town pier in front.
Okay.
Pretty much east, east of...
Yeah, sure. Okay, so it's not just the beach parking lots or anything like that?
No, the beach parking lots are in there.
Are in there, but so it's a quite a, I was pleased to see this. It's quite a large area that's gonna be affected by this, because I know certainly up in Third Cliff, we have a lot of people parking and walking quite a distance to get down to the beach, and so I think it's appropriate that these areas are included in the waterfront zones.
What raised the fines in August of 2007?
Yeah.
To be honest, it hasn't been that much of a deterrent.
Sure.
$40.
Yeah, okay. And then my other question is, in the summary, I just was a little confused by, by some of the wording on page 13, because I was trying to follow along what the, the net increase in revenue is going to be here. It says, "If the board adopts the committee's recommended fee increase, the total projected revenue for summer 2010 is $130,422." Then it says, "A rate increase of $30 results in additional revenue of $105,427," and that's what I was confused by. Did you mean a rate increase from $30, or did you mean adding, adding $30, and is that being proposed, or would that be something in the future? I got all sort of twisted around as to what, because it's going up from 25, the standard sticker fee is going up from 25, or is proposed to go from 25 to 35. So I was...
Second sticker, maybe. What's the second sticker currently?
10. Second sticker is currently 10, and so it's, there's not gonna be any discount for a second sticker, so I was confused just by that sentence.
But that's if the board didn't want to vote 35. We printed all the numbers.
Oh, I see.
We just voted $30.
Okay, so if we didn't go up to 35, if we went 30, it would be that.
That was not the committee's recommendation, but I knew you'd asked the question, so...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, understood. Okay.
I put all the revenue projections in at $30, too.
Yeah, no, oh, I see what you mean. Okay, yeah. I think the 35 certainly makes sense, because the other thing, just for people in the audience out there, that we also have before us is the comparative with, with a whole slew of other towns, Brewster, Wellfleet, Westport, Barnstable, Yarmouth, Plymouth, Falmouth, for comparative fees, and our fees are still well within the standard, the proposed new fees, higher fees are well within the boundaries of acceptability, so I'm all in favor of the 35 right up front. Those are my only questions at this point, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Tony, anything?
Yeah, I want to reiterate what Rick said. This is a very comprehensive report and very well done, and I also want to thank Tricia because Jill and I have been talking about this for, well, a couple of years at least, and to see how quickly you put this into action is, is impressive, so thank you. And now I'll, because some of the pages are having questions on. One of the things that Tricia just brought up is that this money is now going into the local, local fees. So if we take it out of that, it will impact certain things like the split between the school and the town. So the, the school currently gets 60% of that money, and they wouldn't. So we'd have to talk about what sort of corrective measure.
And Mary and I talked about that today, it's about 72,000 based on the revenues right now, but we would hold the school harmless. So there would be no net whatever.
Some sort of percentage.
So when we look at the local receipts and some of the other things, we've been talking of financial forecasting and pulling away other expenditures already in those departments, then, like she said earlier, it would be, it wouldn't add up.
Great. On page six, I had a question. Page six says, "The town allocates funds to the recreation department for their lifeguards now." How does that happen?
It's the, Jennifer, it's the seasonal salaries line item budget that you vote under the operating budget.
So it comes out of the local receipts and it goes?
No, so they raised $116,000 in revenues for FY, FY 09 and calendar 2009, and so that goes into the general fund, $116,000, and then we fund under the recreation department budget, $130,000, that's part of the rec line item.
No, no, I know the expense is there, and I know the revenue's on the local receipts. I didn't, when it says allocates, I don't know, the money doesn't actually go over there, it's just a...
You've, we've...
Right, okay.
Vote would probably be a better word.
I had, one of your points, there was a question about, and for those people that don't know what the report says, one of the, one of the suggestions here is that there's not a discounted rate for additional vehicles for a parking permit. So currently, we pay $25 for a parking permit and $10 for an additional vehicle, and this is suggesting that we raise it to $35, which as Rick mentioned is within the norm of what other communities are, but it says there would be no discount for a second vehicle. And one of the things that you pointed out here was the concern as to how many people would get additional vehicles at that point. For $10, you thought it would be, it's, it's a nice buy and people get them, and my question was, does it have to go up to the 35? You know, if it was 20, you know, what's that fine line between getting people to buy the extra ticket and the price? So if it was $20 for an additional vehicle instead of the full 35, is that gonna take it from 100% to zero, or did you guys think about that matrix at all, or?
I don't think we did it for the replacement sticker. We did factor it in for like the Marshfield change and things like that.
Right.
The reason the committee recommended that is when we looked at the other town datas, no community had a different price for a second vehicle. So that was really the genesis of that one.
Yeah, but it's a...
We also did look at the slippage that would occur, the number of people who would just save for 10 bucks on buying an extra ticket, but we felt like that the increase to $35 would be more straightforward and would more than cover the loss of the $10 revenues.
Yeah, so it's about $16,000 is what, I believe.
We didn't account for everybody who bought a second sticker.
Right, you put in a 10. Yeah, so that was my question. Do you want to just make it more, but just not make it the full?
The idea was to simplify the whole process for everyone.
Yeah, I think what'll happen is after one year of doing it, you'll find out. Did the extra vehicles go from 1,000 to zero, or did it go from 1,000 to?
The only thought was if you have a second car, it's taking up a spark parking space just like someone else's first car.
So you think people take two cars to the beach?
I don't know something to do with it.
Yeah, and the, the other thing that, that someone just brought up is, is right now Marshfield residents can buy a sticker for, if someone can help me, $25.
Exact same sticker.
Exactly the same, and the suggestion there is not to allow that anymore and to, to offer a fixed number of tickets at the rate of $200 a ticket, which is what some of the other communities do. So if you're not a situat resident, there'd be 300 tickets available at $200 a ticket. From whatever town. Whatever town. Which is an interesting thought and obviously makes money. The thing that came to mind to me there is, you know, I thought that the Marshfield residents would be upset because of the benefit that they get, but then I started thinking about years ago, I think Bob can probably, you know, Marshfield charges us the commercial rate for water, so we pay hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars more in water to, to get water to Hummerock, so I think...
And we did calculate the slippage for that, from the Marshfield...
The, I was also surprised at the, and Chief, you may be able to answer this, the, the misuse of the stickers and how, you know, you went into people, the sticker doesn't match the registration on the vehicle, that it's...
We see it all the time.
Yeah, so it is...
Absolutely.
Right, and they don't tape, they tape them on or they don't put them on?
Either that or it'll just be, you know, somewhere where you can't find it, or, you know, you're really gonna hunt for it, or you'll see them altered, or see some pretty creative...
Right. I thought that was interesting to see that there's abuses out there of, of the nominal fee that we charge. Not to keep going here, but I just had one other concern, as you talked about going to the different lots and really marking out the parking spaces that would be available, particularly at Minnet, in that, that first lot at Minnet, and I think you said there was 20-something spots there. If you striped it out, you may get up to like 26, and I personally have seen about 40 cars in that lot, and that's, that's the, always the place where people want to go park and there's no spot, even in the secondary lot. So I'd be a little bit hesitant to start, you know...
Well, what we'd like to do, I think if you agree with the concept of this, then we would take, and we'd go to traffic rules and ask for some changes in the regulation. One of them would be that, you know, hopefully these, these lots that all get striped, striped out, and we'd post them that parking only in, in marked areas, so if you're gonna park in an aisle, you're gonna park somewhere, you're probably, you know, you're gonna be in violation. As far as the bigger lot in Minnet, that's partly paved, partly dirt.
Partly underwater.
Well, we're gonna try to find some way to, I've been working with DPW, to find some way, because what happens, you know, there may hold 80 spots, I'm talking about the one furthest west one, but it only takes about 20 cars to tie it up if they're parked the wrong way. Try to get some sense of...
I guess what I'd say, I'd be a little bit hesitant in doing that on the small lot because people generally work it out. You know, they can fit more cars in there and they can maneuver it, and people don't block other people in. I'd just be, if you're gonna take that lot that can hold, say, 40 vehicles and cut it down to 25, then I just think maybe that'd be a little over, overregulation.
That lot is actually one of the ones that's actually fairly low.
Yeah.
The problems we seem to have down there is that there's some reserved areas for lifeguards, and people will park in those, and that displace lifeguards.
Right. And again, just for the audience and the other people, what was the other major, I think those are the major revenue driving things, was raising the price to 35 from 25, the second sticker was $35, no discount, and then selling 300 non-resident stickers at $200 apiece. Is that right, Tricia?
Thank you. John?
Think that'll create a problem on just a couple, I mean, I'm all for it, especially if you can sell 300 of them. Do you think it would create any type of a problem, 4th of July, 3rd of July, with residents that have a sticker that cannot park? So I'm sure you, this is maybe one of those topics that not everyone agreed on.
We actually shut the lots off at 9 o'clock. The, the lots are shut down at 9 o'clock at night anyway, so we actually shut them down a little earlier on the, on the 4th of July, on the 3rd of July.
No, I guess I'm talking about, you know, during the daytime hours for... No, I guess I'm talking about, you know, during the daytime hours for...
Well, I, and that was discussed. I, I had that concern that, you know, we could get an influx of people that, you know, are going to be here today and not tomorrow, I don't care. But I think, you know, we chose to limit it to that number and...
See how it goes.
You know, exactly. I mean, if we find, I'm sure we'll be back here.
So, three hundred and fourteen Marshfield stickers.
Okay.
So even though those folks traditionally use Hummerock, that was three hundred and fifteen, fourteen non-resident stickers that we did sell. We don't know what the impact is, that's why we did the cap at three hundred. Because we're selling that to the Marshfield residents anyway.
All right, and I agree with everyone that had said something before that I've never seen such an in-depth report, so it's, it's wonderful. Thank you, thank you, John, everyone. And most importantly, this money will go towards funding those guards that maybe wouldn't have jobs or beaches would go unguarded. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's really the important point is to make sure the lifeguards are staffed and they have the equipment that they need, which is an ongoing challenge. But things like doing some real improvements to the parking lot, that would create a source. And being able to address the seaweed removal if they have that. I mean, a lot of the town's response last summer to that was driven by where's the money coming from because it's ten thousand dollars a pop. Now we'll be able to really respond to that. That doesn't mean we're going to, we still have a policy in place in terms of whether it's a public health issue, but we just didn't have a cost center to be able to really reinvest in the beaches. And they're a big part of the town, but I've come to learn the short time I've been here.
Right.
And we should really continue to make them the wonderful asset they are. I mean, it's, it's a clear road because we're not even making ends meet right now.
Thank you.
Yes, folks, thank you. I'm sorry I'm late. Just so I'm clear on this, so in other words, your proposal or the potential proposals to increase it either to thirty dollars or thirty-five dollars depending on what this board decides for...
Their recommendation is thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. So if we increase it by thirty-five, then you're projecting a revenue source potentially of over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Right.
Is that, am I reading this report?
Right.
That's page fourteen. And what you do know as it stands today is that the costs that seem to be somewhat, I don't want to say static, but in other words, is about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That's based on two thousand and nine revenue or, or take that back.
That's right. That's the revenue for two thousand and nine.
The cost for two thousand and, uh, two thousand and ten you're projecting is that like one seventy-four, seventy-four thousand, is that it? In other words, basically you're saying by increasing it to thirty-five dollars and including the three hundred stickers for two hundred dollars that you'll be able to offset any potential deficit.
Right.
That's, that's what you're projecting. That's what the analysis is.
Because the all-in budget's a hundred and ninety-three thousand, so even with that revenue increase of thirty-five, that's leaving us seed money for capital improvements of about forty-three thousand. But plus or minus things like Tony mentioned as far as the slippage with the second vehicle or stuff like that.
Right. No, I, I, I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure I was reading this properly and that makes perfect sense. And I think it's, you know, the idea of opening it up to out-of-town people with a set limit, I think, makes sense and put it out there and see if they're willing to do it. Other towns do it and I think that's a good recommendation. And hopefully we can generate some capital to improve the various areas, whether it's the, the parking lots or, you know, the equipment or the seaweed, seaweed removal. So I endorse it. It's great. Thank you.
Motion for the board, anything for the floor before we go on, before I ask for motion? Seeing nothing, we'll ask for motion.
Sure. Move that the board of selectmen vote to support the recommendations made by the sticker committee and the town administrator.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded.
One other, just question, well, comment is that there is a line item in here for seaweed removal. So that is already incorporated in this, so if we have that problem next year. And I just asked that it gets revisited after a year to see what the outcome of all the numbers and the changes in the policy, the impact is?
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Genereous. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you, folks. Thank you. A little diversion from our normal agenda. We have a walk-in period at seven o'clock. I didn't want to surprise anybody who wanted to come to the walk-in by starting at six-thirty if they expected us to start at seven. So are there any walk-ins? Yes, sir.
Just a quick...
Go ahead.
...more than, I apologize for not hitting you ahead of time. I'm Tom McCuska from fifty year in Paschaleen. In North Situate Village, there's a couple of items that really get onto my skin. I don't know if they can do anything with it or anything, but one is like parking down by Wilder Brothers there. They have signs on the sidewalk and everything, private sign, you know, cross at your own risk and everything.
Maybe you could ask Brian if he, Brian, if you came in, just listen to this one concern here we have. If you could just listen to this concern, go ahead.
Parking, uh, North Situate Village, the parking area by Wilder Brothers there, they have signs on the sidewalk, you know, private property.
Right. It is privately owned.
How can they put signs on a sidewalk though if it's, if it's a right-of-way?
They own it.
But I mean, isn't it always been a right-of-way there?
Uh...
And Situate has town sign offices, I believe.
Without looking at the deed, I don't know, but I do know that, we did do the research. They do own the, they own the sidewalk and they own those spaces in front of the, uh, Countryway Radio, the Travel Store.
So does the town plow those and everything else too?
They plow the street. I don't know that they're clearing the sidewalk.
So they're plowing their parking spaces out there?
They make clear those parking spaces.
I mean, it just...
I don't, I don't know.
Just, just seems like, you know, to better North Situate, it just seems like an eyesore and they have signs, you know, signs like in the, like would appear to be a crosswalk going across. They have like sandwich signs and stuff like that there.
Have you talked to the property owners at all?
I mean, it's...
They do, they do own it.
Yeah, but I mean, it just, it doesn't seem right that you can do that kind of signage. And my other question is, down by Tedeschi's, the Jersey barriers that are in the park, I don't know if that's town property or...
That's, that's privately owned too.
And it's...
That whole lot there is privately owned. Everything between Tedeschi's and the post office, does it actually, I think people think that that's owned by the town. It is not. The entire area is privately owned.
Does it even...
So that, that whole parking area between Tedeschi's and the post office is, is privately, that's Tedeschi's parking lot?
It's owned by the people that own the, with the post office, auto parts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, all those guys, yeah. I didn't know that.
I think Al might have some idiot information on those barriers.
The barrier was placed there during the MBTA construction and at the request of the Tedeschi's store owner. It was a used barrier. It looks terrible. We've offered on several occasions now to the Tedeschi's manager, owner, that the town would be glad to haul that barrier away. He still wants it there to protect his cars running through and causing an injury to some of his employees, which happened several years ago. He has come up with an alternative that he is working on for a more decorative barrier between those two parking lots. And until he's done with that, we'll leave ours there at his request. Otherwise, we will take it away and dispose of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Before we go, can I just ask Tricia two quick questions because I've been seeing a bunch of emails come around about the school and this may clarify a lot of, a lot of questions. I think I know the answers, but coming from her may be better. Tricia, there's been talk about a, a surcharge to be charged for education, similar to CPC. And it's my understanding that, that you cannot just go and assess a three percent fee. The town cannot generate additional surcharge fees to certain individuals. The only way to increase the tax base is through a proposition to an app override. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so for those of you that may be watching or listening, that is not a legal way to, the, the way that CPC was able to do it is because that was a state-run opportunity for the town or for all towns. But a town cannot just say, we want to assess a, a charge for students or for any entity to generate revenue. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And the other thing, question that came around that I, again, speaking of the school overrides and getting those, a special town meeting can or cannot have an override?
Special town meeting?
Can you have an override question at a special town meeting?
I, off the top of my head, I don't think, I think you can, but I don't hold me to that. They're typically done at an annual because what an override is, is it's anticipation of funding that fiscal year budget that the annual town meeting is doing. So even if you could, it really wouldn't make sense for a general operating override. Now for a debt exclusion override, you could do that at a special. But typically for operating budget, you do it at the annual because it's for the prospective budget.
Or you could do it at the special, but it would be for the following fiscal year, not the current one.
You don't, I mean, the thing with an override is...
Which would be weird.
Town meeting is the authorization, the ballot is the appropriation.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, you don't have to have a town meeting before an override.
Right.
You can have an override before. You have to do both.
Right.
But obviously, if town meeting approves a higher budget and then the override fails, then you need a special to go back and balance your budget.
Understood. And again, just so people understand, town meeting can vote to approve or disapprove an override, but the ballot is the end, end-all, be-all of whether it is implemented or not.
Right, and same for CPC.
So hopefully that answers questions for people that are sending them on websites somewhere.
That was the situation we had the last override. Several things passed at town meeting but didn't pass at the ballot.
Right.
So.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome. Well, but before we go on, I know we normally, right after Valentine's Day, we make, acknowledge the fact that we receive some great Valentines from children at Wampe Tuck School. And rather than wait till the end of the meeting and the other business, where it'll probably be close to ten o'clock tonight, I thought we maybe could do it now. If you'd like to, if any member of the board would like to, just acknowledge the, the students have sent them Valentines. It'd be great.
Sure, I would just like to thank Mr., Mr. Max Horton and some young fellow named Jack. Didn't sign his last name, but it was great. And I got these and brought them home. I must admit, it gave my wife some pause because she says, who are you getting all these Valentines from? And so it was nice to be able to share that this came from the schools and thank you all very much. It's great to know that we selectmen are appreciated and dearly loved.
That might be...
How's that? And I'd like to thank Kevin McCarthy and Adriana Cowley for, for sending me two. And I'd like to thank them both for spelling my last name correctly. That doesn't happen very often. And then it prompted my daughter, Sophia, to give me one as well, so.
She spelled your name right.
I have also got two from Juliana Zaccoon, a very, very nice Valentine. And I thank her very much for sending it. Also, I have one from Haley from Wampe Tuck School. I just have to read it. Dear Mr. Norton, Happy Hearts Day, Valentine's Day. Every Bunny, B-U-N-N-Y, need some Valentines. This one will be yours. Sincerely, Haley. So Haley, thank you for recognizing. It might be the only one I got, so thank you.
I wanted to thank Ava from Wampe Tuck and reading her message, which I'll read just in a second, I think it's clear that she is a, a fan of Simon and Garfunkel. It says, have a happy Valentine's Day. I'm sending lot of hearts your way when you're feeling down and gray. So I thank you, Ava, very much.
Lastly, I'd like to thank Mia for writing Mia Valentine and also doing a little coloring. She stayed within the lines. Good job. I hope you have a happy, happy Valentine's Day. I hope you get lots of Valentines. Thank you for keeping our town a green place to live. Pretty cool.
All right.
Thank you all. Thank you all from Wampe Tuck School. We get these every year and we, we look forward to them, actually. I think we'd be disappointed if we didn't get them, so thank you all and thank all the teachers at Wampe Tuck who make this possible. Thank you. Next, number eight. Discussion, vote, special events, permit for sure.
Motion?
Let them come up first.
Yeah, come up and... Thank you. And if you could just once again identify yourself for the record and move.
Sure, my name is Mike Versace and I'm the race director for the Shore Run this year and this is...
Michelle Hagan.
Hi, Michelle.
I'm the chair for the last year.
And we, our Valentine's cards are in the mail somewhere. We can either answer questions, we have submitted our special events application and written a letter and answer any questions, we can go through...
Maybe just very briefly, if you would, I see you have, it looks like a map of the, of the race. If you could just tell us where it's going to go and when it's going to be and what people can do to sign up.
Sure, absolutely. So the Shore Run is for the benefit of the high school, as everyone knows. Shore is a fundraising organization. It's raised about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars since nineteen ninety for the school and this is one of our major fundraisers. This year, it's planned for Memorial Day weekend on May twenty-ninth. Registration on the site starts at about eight-thirty a.m. when people start signing up or a day of race registrants will. The race starts at ten, formally kicks off at ten and finishes up about noon time or twelve-thirty around then. The race activities are all within Peggety Beach. That's where the race starts. And we have a map here that shows the course, which is exactly the same course that we ran last year. In terms of number of runners expected, we expect about five hundred. Last year was a little less than that, I believe, about four-fifty, four-sixty. But from everyone that we speak with now about races and events like this, the numbers are increasing a little bit and certainly Situate is a very desirable place to come and run. And we're, we're proud of that.
And walk.
And walk also, that's right, excuse me. So I mentioned the course is about the same or exactly the same, I should say. We have a, a program to coordinate the race with businesses and neighborhoods along the course run and we can go through that with you if you'd like. The primary sponsor this year of the race is Dunkin' Donuts. They're the titled sponsor and we also have other businesses in the Situate area that are also either sponsoring or providing some merchandising around them. Our desire would be, if possible, to, after the race is done, to try to move some of the runners or their families into the town so that they could take advantage of what we have in Situate for, for businesses. We coordinate through you, certainly with, with police, fire and medical and with the Department of Public Works. And we do have some refreshments also after. There's no, this is not a big food event, but there are refreshments and other things for the runners as they leave and then come back. So that's a, sort of a, an overview of the race and if you have some questions or would like to go through the, the course, we'd be glad to do that for you.
I think it was the same as last year. Well, I'll open it up to the board if anyone has any questions. John?
I was just going to make a comment. Michelle ran this last year. It was, seemed to be a, a good fit for the town. Like they had said, it was the proceeds go to the town. This is a great example of a, a race that this town can fit, you know, for lack of a better word. Good luck. I know it's a ton of work and anyway, I can, good, good, I'm glad. Yep.
Is the course route the same as Joshua's run used to be? What is the actual course route? Just out of curiosity. You got the map there, so.
I'll hold it up and show it.
Show it.
Is it, I don't know if it, is it visible from here? I can bring it up close.
No, that's good. As long as the TV can pick it up, can you?
I got it.
You got it? Good.
So, you know, the event area is in Peggety Beach parking lot. And then all of the participants will just exit out of that driveway, take a quick left, and the race actually begins on Peggety Beach Road. And it was determined to start it that way, working with Sergeant Gil Martin, that it would be the safest to have all of the participants sort of backing up onto this road rather than starting out on Edward Foster and blocking that road at the start of the race. So we started the race actually on Peggety Beach Road with everyone backing up this direction, and then runners made an immediate left onto Edward Foster. This was the 5K course. And then walkers were at the back of the group, and they proceeded straight ahead out, onto Edward Foster, out towards First Cliff. So runners came out Edward Foster, to St. Mary's intersection, made a right-hand turn onto a short, little stint of Front Street, and then Brook Street, up Stockbridge, and then a left all the way down First Parish, which is a nice gradual downhill run.
Right.
Back through the intersection, and then out to the left on Edward Foster, which is the direction that the walkers had started, out around First Cliff, make a hairpin turn, and then back around Crescent and finishing inside the lot at Peggety Beach. And that seemed to work out very well. By starting the race here and coming this direction, we had everyone cleared through this short section of Front Street in about 20 minutes, and the police were able to open up this section of the road.
Great, great. Further comments from the board?
Are any of the roads, or Brook Street closed? Or is it just one side of the, how do they?
The police detail, they actually do close this section of the road, but it's for a segment of time.
Right.
And then, once they pass the, you know, the last runner through that section, then they open up the road.
So nothing's closed for more than a half hour, would you say? It's all, only the runners are going that way?
That's correct.
Yes, yes. I'd say the quickest runner would run the entire 5K course, and he was fast, wasn't he? He was maybe 18, 19 minutes.
Minutes, right.
And the last runner came in in about 45 minutes, 50 minutes. But that was to do the entire course.
Thank you. Further discussion from the board?
Just one thing. Tricia, you, this gone through you and everything? You good?
Motion?
Sure, move that the board's selectmen vote to support the 2010 Situate Shore Run on Saturday, May 29th, 2010. Per the conditions set by the fire, police, DPW, building, and health departments, as well as the town administrator.
Second. Motion's been made in second and all a favor? Aye. Opposed? Janice, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
The next is the vote on the school building committee. This committee was formed in combination of Sue Martin, the school superintendent, and Tricia. I believe we spoke about it a few weeks ago. There were a couple of positions weren't filled. Is that correctly? Now they are, we're good to go.
As long as you vote.
As long as we voted. And we signed it. We hope to do that right now. Any questions or a motion?
Motion?
Yeah.
Move the board's selectmen appoint the school building committee for the town of Situate as presented by the superintendent of schools in accordance with 963 CMR 2.00. Second.
Further discussion?
Just one, one quick question. I counted the vote, the voting members, and Joe, you're in there twice.
I'm on twice.
So you had two votes?
I hope not.
So, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. So I don't know whether it'd be 6, but we like Joe.
Yeah, but I'm not sure, Joe.
But you wouldn't have an even number of votes, would you?
That's a good question. Sue, I get one vote.
No, I know. But are there six voting members or an odd number of voting members?
Looks like you got 11. Which now it's 10.
Take Joe out once and you have six.
Unless Tricia gets a vote.
Yeah, maybe Tricia, I don't know.
1, 2, 3, 4, I count 7.
Well, the far-right column says voting member.
Yeah, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Yeah, but you're in there twice.
I'm in there twice.
I count 6, counting Joe as 1.
There's 6 voting members.
You're right.
Do you think, I don't know.
I think it's by statute, is I don't think we can change it.
Tricia, are you supposed to be a voting member on this?
I don't think so. Sue, do you know? Yeah, you need to be a resident.
Motion?
It's already been made.
It's been made, it's been seconded. Seconded, all in favor?
Quick discussion. Yeah, if you have to be a resident, Kevin Cafferty isn't, I don't think, a resident, so he couldn't be a voting member. Or is that?
He wouldn't be a voting person anyway. Some of these are staff people that have to be, like, I have to be on it by virtue of my position.
Okay.
So is a CCPO.
Okay.
Sort of, to ensure that the laws are followed with the procurement and everything.
Okay.
So you have an odd number now.
So now you have an odd number. So he can't vote. Now that fixes it. You have five now.
But MC and PTO.
Got you.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Next. Number 10. Is a vote new sewer betterment assessment. Al. Jane.
Jane Al, whoever would like to be the spokesman here. This is similar to what we did in the past, the past two Decembers, actually. It was brought to the attention of the town that there was a typo on the list of that, remember that 650 or so betterments that you accepted and voted to assess to the assessing office, and they assessed it to me, and we collected on them. This one, the Maplockin' Lot, at the end, it had an A, but it should have had a B for 81 countryway, I think.
Yes.
So in order to fix that and to be able to send them a bill for the full sewer betterment that they're already hooked up to, we need you to vote it, to approve it, and then Steve can send them a bill from assessing, and I can collect it, or we can apportion it over 20 years.
Thank you. From the board, discussion?
Have you spoken with Mr. Larson?
He brought it to our attention, actually. He's looking to sell the property, I think, so. He's had use of it for the past three years.
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move the board's selectmen vote to approve a new sewer betterment assessment for the documents submitted by the treasurer, collector, and the director of DPW, and further to forward said vote to the board of assessors. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Janice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Genitive number 11 is a discussion of the 2011 budget audit. They are lengthy. We will start with our friends from the school committee. Jamie?
See you all.
And all. Sue, thank you. All, thank you.
First of all, I would like to, as a board, thank you, all of you, for the work you've put into this. We witnessed many meetings and saw the anguish and the work that went into it, so thank you all for what you've done this year.
Thank you, and I guess that there's a couple of these we'd like to start off with, if we could, and one is, there is a number that we're going to present tonight, which we all know, the town's facing a similar situation in regards to their budget. I don't think anybody would like to be in this situation in regards to what we have to do. So we're going to submit a number with the caveat that we will continue to work on other ways to find funding to fill the gap. This number represents a gap for us of having to cut about a million and a half in cost in order to be able to get to this number, and so we're working a number of initiatives to try to fill that gap, still knowing that at this point in town, at this point in time, what the town can allocate to us is the number that we're going to sit here and present. So that's partially a statement for the folks that are out there concerned that everyone's washing their hands and done with the process. That's not the case. We're still looking at a number of different options, including talking with our bargaining units and try to find ways to save money. There's also the, I think, Tony, to your point, what was alluded to was the, there's some discussion as to if folks were to ask for an opportunity to stop funding CPC, for instance, for a while, could that money be converted into a 3% school tax, for lack of a better term? The answer to that is no. What we want to make sure people understand is if they go down that path, there are a few things they need to bear in mind. One is, there would have to be a town meeting article and an agreement that we would not fund that this year, then there would have to subsequently be an override to fund whatever amount they wanted to move back and forth. So it's not as simple as, great, let's just take from column A and stick it in column B. So the other thing we worry about, for the CPC's sake, is that you do put that at risk. If you take that off, it's not like you can automatically put it back on, number one, and number two, there's no guarantee that by taking that off, that money's going to automatically come over to help fund the town and other areas. So, you know, sometimes I think we need to make sure everybody understands that aspect because there is some element of risk involved in that. And also, the other mindset is, whatever is done with that, it would fund, in our typical formula, the town and the schools, so it wouldn't be, one could just go totally to schools. The formula would come back, and 66% would go to schools, and 33-point, whatever, would go to the town. So I just think it's important to bring that up so everybody understands. I know you all have had a rough time coming up with the number that we have. It's a reality of where we're at in the economy at this point in time. We certainly don't like presiding over a situation where we're dismantling what we worked so hard to build in regards to the override and the like. And again, we want to assure you, as your partners here in governance, that we are doing everything we can to mitigate the impact it will make. And so, we're not done yet. But we are here to present you with a number. So I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent.
Sue, before you start, I would just like to acknowledge, Michelle Smith, who's also from the school committee, is here today. So I'd like to acknowledge that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. In your packets prepared for tonight, you've already probably seen this PowerPoint a numerous number of times, and it gives an overview of all our sources of revenue, our operating expenses. We are working on a level-funded budget for next year. It details out our operating revenue for FY10 and 11. Also gives the historical perspective over the last 10 years or so, identifies the challenges and opportunities. And then we work on strategies on how we're going to narrow and close the gap. We've identified for you earlier, in early presentations, what our guiding principles are and how we make our decisions and how we prioritize.
Dr. Martin, if I could just interrupt, just a quick question.
Yes.
Is this essentially the same document that's on the web? From Bill Johnson, Mr. Johnston's, the school committee's presentation?
Close, close to it.
I mean, reasonably close?
The first part, yes.
Okay, great.
The first part, yes. After starting on page 6.
Okay.
It is different.
Yep.
So that first whole part was all review.
Excellent.
The next part is the guiding principles, how we make our decisions, a revisiting of our accountability goals for the next few years, as well as our mission and vision statement. As Jamie had mentioned, we are, even though we have been given a number of budget reduction of approximately 1.5 million, it's important to remember that we're trying all different kinds of strategies to consider as we continue to work through this. We've identified collaboration with other districts for supplies, reorganizing the administrative offices, reconfiguring grade levels, looking at cost analysis of closing buildings. We have also, when we did our first budget presentation back in December, we generated a list of 30 to 35 different ideas from, that were, came from that meeting, and we are actively exploring that. There was another meeting in the end of January, January 28th, and we, from that meeting, there were probably five to six pages of additional, very thoughtful ideas that, as a district, we are pursuing each and every one of those to get down to, to see if it is cost-effective for us to implement that particular strategy. And specifically, in terms of reductions for FY11, we broke them out into the different cost centers, and in central administration, there'd be a reduction of two FTEs, full-time equivalents, as well as a reduction in the curriculum initiative budget. In special education, that area would be four, reduction of four full-time equivalents, as well as we're planning on reorganizing the Early Childhood Center. What that means is probably relocating the Early Childhood Center into one or more of the elementary schools, which was recommended in an audit from last year. In the elementary schools, there'd be a reduction of approximately seven classroom teachers, as well as, it identifies eight clerical support staff, but that, again, is a little bit high. It'd probably be more like four. Some instrumental music programs are also being reviewed. You have in your packet some of the projected class sizes for 10 and 11, and what the average are, and the number of sections which identify the seven, reduction of seven. Situate High School is looking at a reduction of 7.3 full-time equivalents, as well as one clerical staff member. The Gates is a 5.4 professional staff, as well as 1.4 support staff. We're also looking in the area of athletics, discussion about eliminating freshman sports, winter track, swim team, ski team, and we're also working on a restructuring of the activity fee as well as the athletic fee. That doesn't mean that everything is completely eliminated. We're also looking at reduction in terms of how many competitions that a particular sporting team would have, how much they have to travel, and we're fine-tuning and kind of customizing it to the sports. So basically, when it comes down to the total reduction to close the gap, we're looking at 38, about 38 full-time equivalent positions, and for this particular plan, it's approximately $1.8 million in reduction. But as we, as we move along throughout the next couple of months, we find out definitive numbers from the state, and as conditions change, we go back to our decision-making process to do the least amount of significant impact to the district that we possibly can.
Thank you. And what we'll do, I know there are some people here interested in this, who might want to ask a question, make a comment. So what I'd like to do is open it up to the board here first, let the board have their say. Again, we, and I'll start it off by saying how much we appreciate all the work that went into this. And after the board has their say, if anyone would like to comment from the audience, just raise your hand, and we'll recognize you, go from there. Open it up to the board. Anything?
Sure.
Tony?
Never a loss for words.
Never a loss for words. But you, I just might add, you know, you attended, I think, probably more of these meetings than anyone other than the school department, so yeah, probably.
Right, and I've seen, all of you have been at them as well. And that's my first comment here. You have to applaud your group for communication. You've been to a half a dozen meetings that were very well-attended, hundreds and hundreds of people, that's really just explaining the whole process to them, and that's something that I think everyone appreciates and I see as a great impact and a positive way for the community. You went above and beyond answering every question you could and explaining it. So I think everybody is, may not be happy with the situation, but at least should understand it because you and Bill and the rest of the board have taken the time, and Sue gone to every meeting and answered every question. So, you know, kudos for that. One thing that Jamie did mention, that's probably the one that's lingering most on the fence, is state aid. We just don't know what that number's going to be. The governor said he's going to pass a budget that is going to keep loc laid flat. We've projected a 10% down, which is what Representative Cantwell was here last meeting, and he said, "That's where you should be." And Senator Hedlund have said the same. So everyone's telling us that our forecast is correct. Don't go with the governor's number yet. With any luck, that will be a plus, and we'll get some more money for both the school and the town side of things. One thing I, and again, we're all in tune in the communications that are going on with the people out there and their concern with it, and I keep hearing a reading or hearing "they," you know, "They did this," or "They did that." And I don't know if it refers to you guys or they, or us guys as they, but.
I think we're all they.
Yeah, we're all they. Just so people understand, they, you know, there's not a lot of flexibility with this. There's only so much money, and it gets split the way it gets split, and we're all dealing with really a fixed number. In terms of they, for us, the five of us have about 20 kids in the school system are going to be in the school system.
That's right.
So we are proponents of the school system, and I know if you look at your board as well, you guys have about the same amount. So as a community, I mean, as groups of us-they, we all want this to work. No one is happy with the situation, and we're all doing everything we possibly can to get where we need to be. Because my next point here is, we all understand that a quality school system impacts the town, impacts your property values, impacts, you know, people that want to move to the town. And we know that it's a key element of that. So every one of us up here and every one of, on the school committee and involved with the school are doing everything possible to get every dollar we possibly can to make this hurt less. Obviously, every community around us is going through the same thing that we are. But I know the numbers too very well, so I don't need to go into details of that, but those are the three or four things that stand out to me that hopefully, you know, people understand.
Chairman, if I may, just in comment to Tony. First off, we appreciate the fact that there was great support and attendance from the selectmen coming to all the meetings and listening. And a lot of times, you know, there tends to be a groundswell that, geez, it's town versus the schools, and it's not really the case. If anything, in the years that I've been doing this, there seems to be a better collaboration than maybe we've ever had. But I also wanna make sure we, we, there are an awful lot of parents and citizens that showed up, came up with great ideas, are very passionate, really concerned about how can they help. And I think that out of this, some of these ideas that we're gonna try to run with, the idea of an alumni fund, the idea of setting up a charity fund, that while you can't use that money to pay salaries, you can use that money to fund other things. Those are all things that we are encouraging them to continue on, that we will support them on, that we think are great ideas that we're gonna incorporate to try to help us in this regard. But I think we, we need to call out the fact that our PTOs, our school councils, the parent organizations, you know, a number of citizens that don't have kids in schools, but are very concerned about property values, and what happens if your schools aren't great, all came out and supported these meetings. And our, our goal was to make sure they understood where we were at. And from that, hopefully, other ideas would come out that could help us close this gap. Again, which we're going to be working hard on the next, you know, we don't, we can vote on a budget. It's not a done deal yet, or the budget might very well be a done deal. What actual amount of money we have to spend isn't a done deal yet. We're gonna continue to work to, to build that copper. So, that's all. But thank you for your support.
Thank you. Further comments from the board?
Yeah, I just wanna pick up on some of the things that Tony said. I mean, we are getting a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls, and that's good. I welcome those, to a certain extent, because it shows the people are now actually starting to pay attention and so on. And, you know, do I wish we weren't in a situation where we had to whack 38.1 FTEs to come up with 1.8 million dollars? Of course. All right? But, the fact of the matter is, and I've said this before, and I apologize to my selectmen because they have to hear it again and again and again from me, but, you know, we're in a situation where eighty-three percent of the budget or so is personnel. And that's a fact. Whether it's high or low, you can argue about, but that's a fact. And there's cost of living increases and other built-in increases that these things cost, three percent or more, plus or minus whatever, and that's a fact too. Whether you are, whether you like CBA agreements, or whether you disagree with them, or whatever, that's a fact. And that number is more than two and a half. Prop two and a half. So the money that comes from an override is eventually gonna get eroded away over X number of years, and that's the situation we're in. We are acutely aware, acutely aware that every teacher we lay off, or every personnel we change, or everything that can be perceived as a weakening of the school system is gonna affect our new growth, so therefore it's gonna affect the town. It's gonna affect our tax receipt, it's gonna affect our local receipts, which is gonna affect the town. And we are all aware of this, and I applaud, as, as these other folks have, what Jamie just said, and Dr. Martin, and Paul, and Mr. Johnston, and the rest of the school committee, the fact that they're doing this all in open. And it's really a great, great thing that they're doing here, under very difficult circumstances. And I don't wanna sound too defensive about this, because as people know, I tend to return just about every single call I can possibly take. But I have to read one line from an email that frankly, I was astonished at, and I think this person, who shall remain nameless, really ought to know better, and shouldn't be sending emails like this around. After a long diatribe about "they" doing this, and "they" doing that, this person writes, "They are basically beating around the bush until town meeting, and then we'll put it out on the table to stab us in the hearts." And that is just uncalled for, inaccurate, inflammatory, incendiary, and just has gotta stop. It's that sort of attitude that contributes to, rather than breaking, rather than break down the barriers, real or perceived, between the alleged town side and the alleged school side. The school committee is doing a great job. There's no pot of money in the town that the town can then go bail out the school committee. People have suggested closing Town Hall for Fridays, or, or some employees, as part of their job duties, are required to use a town-owned vehicle to commute back and forth to their home, because they do their work. They have a vehicle so much in town that they have midnight calls and so on. That's not gonna be 1.8 million dollars. It's simply not gonna do it. As Mr. Johnston and his presentation has done before, with the school committee, and many, many times, and the reason why I interrupted Dr. Martin, I'm sorry, Dr. Martin, for interrupting you, as I commented earlier about, is this the same document on the web? And it pretty much is. This document has been out there. There's no "they" here. This has been fully publicized, fully vetted, and no one's happy with it, but it's the very best we're able to do under these trying circumstances. So, I just wanna, you know, conclude my statements here by just saying, you know, we're in tough times, but I'm very confident that we're doing the absolute best we can. There were, on that one overhead that I keep referring to, there were eighteen or so different options to, to help balance the budget, and they've gone through and considered every single one of them. So this isn't etched in stone. No one is going to beat around the bush until town meeting, and then put it out on the table to stab us in the hearts. That sort of thing just isn't happening. So if people are concerned, that's great. Express those concerns, participate. But also, it's very important to make sure that the facts are presented accurately, because that way, then the participation is that much more productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments?
Just some, Rick just said what I had written down, kinda summed it up. When times are very difficult, it makes your jobs that much harder. Ten years ago, when the economy was rolling along, money was flowing, your job wasn't nearly as difficult. So, I commend you on the job each and every one of you have done. It's not easy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Dennehy?
Well, now that everybody, except for you, Mr. Sheriff, said something, I'll just be brief. Thanks to the school committee, Dr. Martin, town administrator. Clearly, times are tough. It's been certainly said. During tough times, tough decisions have to be made, and I think you folks have done a wonderful job in trying to determine that. Your job is to, to bring in a balanced budget, attempt to do so. Those decisions ultimately are gonna be made at town floor. The authorization of to do something for this year is gonna either come, or it will not. And then it will have to go to the vote, and that appropriation will have to be done. So, you know, the people of Situate, you know, these are difficult times. They only need to look at their purse, and their pocketbooks, and their checkbooks to find out how difficult it is. So, you know, people need to get active, they need to get motivated, but by the same token, let there be no mistake, there is no silver bullet, or panacea for this situation. Because next year's budget is actually gonna probably be worse. So, I think, you know, what you have done is, is put the figures, put everything out there for people to understand the dire situation that not just any, not just Situate, but most towns around here are facing. And we're very fortunate from the stewards that have been, for you folks, who have been taking over the school committee, and, and trying to get the figures, and try to figure it out, to at least get through this difficult time. So, it's a lot easier, as Sean said, and as Rick said, it's easy to be in control during great times, when there's ample money to be able to pay for these things. But I think it's equally harder during difficult times to make those tough decisions. So I commend you, because clearly, news is getting out there, but you're getting out as much information so that everybody can have an informed decision when the time comes for town meeting, and if it comes to a vote. So, again, I commend you all, and I thank you, and I, and also for Brenda, and also for Mike, and of course, Bill Johnston. Thank you.
Again, I think it's all been said. Thank you all. Good luck in, in the next two months and working at...
Something we wanna stress to, to all of your points, is that, you know, we're not done.
Absolutely.
This is, you know, if, if flash today and no further ideas, this is what we'd be putting for you. You know, the number is the number. You know, as I said a week ago, it's a procedural issue at this point. How we get to the number, that's where we, where the rubber hits the road. So we need to figure that part out yet.
Thank you. Now, I, as I mentioned earlier, any comments from the floor, anyone would like to make a comment? Please, don't feel obligated to make one, but feel free if you'd like to make one. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
South Shore Vote Tech, Jack Manning. Thank you, coming in.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your...
Back again. Another year.
We should've said more thanks to her, too. She's done phenomenal work.
Thank you, Tricia. South Shore Vote Tech, Jack.
Hey, uh...
Jack's our representative, if anyone does not know Jack, Jack's been representative probably eight, nine years.
Yeah, about eight years, I think.
So thank you for doing that.
I love doing it. I love the support that Situate gives our students, too. It's great. And they've always come through, and our students have done great jobs around this town, as you're well aware, so...
Yep.
We reap benefits from our South Shore Vote Tech as well. I can only express the same disdain for the economy that we're having right now. It's a tough road to hoe, but I think we've come up with a preliminary budget, which is an increase of 5% over last year. But that's holding it to the absolute mino. That's no layoffs, keeping, we had an increase in students as well from our town, so, but we've been able to hold the line. It's level funded, no layoffs, and, so the proposal for Situate would be 604,419. Now, I don't know if you're aware that the 5% increase over last year, however, if you go back to 2009, we were at 635,000. So we're only 5% more from last year, but we're, we were 10% higher in 2009. So we've held the line consistently, consistently for the last couple of years, and with the cost of materials and things at a vocational school, some of the costs are just out of our hands, so we kept it as tight as we could and still be a functioning school, so...
Jack, is it, didn't it go up because of the number of students, though? I mean, this, this is mostly driven by how many kids that we send in.
Mostly by the students, right. Yes.
Sean?
Jack, did I see, read somewhere, and, and maybe you could explain it, if a capital expenditure has to be done at the school, did I see something about a roof? And how is that dispersed amongst, you know, say the roof had to be done, and maybe that's what it was?
Roof is coming up.
All right, then how does...
Again, it goes with the formula that the state gives us.
Okay.
It's basically the same idea. In our case, I think we, as far as the roof is concerned, we are gonna be totally, we're only coming up with 48% of the cost between the eight towns.
You, the, all right, okay.
And then they formulate, you know, do the formula after that. Of the 48%, I'm not sure how much, we haven't come to a final figure on the roof yet. But the eight towns will only be responsible for 48% in total, because 52% will be picked up by the state. But that also is predicated on the fact that they have the money for it. They keep telling us we have the money, but I'm not quite as sure as...
Kinda like a condo, if there's some improvements made, you have to...
Right. And I, I think if you've been to the school, you'll notice, it was built in the sixties, and it's in great condition. I mean, they do a spectacular job as far as maintaining that building, and it's mostly maintained by the students, and then they do have their own custodial staff that, I mean, the thing is great, great, great condition for a 50-year-old school, you know.
Tony?
Yeah, Jack, quick question, and this has come up at meetings and stuff, and it's difficult to, to kinda grasp. You come in here before us, and your budget's going up, and you're saying there's no layoffs at the Vote Tech.
Right.
But then Jamie just sat down, and he said he's got 38.1 layoffs, and his budget went down for the second consecutive year. So, some of the thought out there is, the Vote Tech isn't quite feeling the pain that the regular public school is.
We're at the exact minimum we can have. If we started laying off teachers, we'd have to start closing programs, which would put more students out of the school.
I bet if I asked Jamie right now how he's gonna make the high school and the junior high school cuts, it's gonna be cutting programs.
Right, but the students don't have to leave the school. They, you're just gonna get bigger classrooms. If, if, in particular, say, the state says I have to have two electrical instructors, I have to lay one of those off, that means the electrical program is gone, and those electrical students will have to go back to the sending schools. If you have the same thing at Situate High School, you lay off a history teacher, you just subdivide those remaining students amongst the remaining history teachers. Because we're, we, we can't be classified with a regular high school. We're a unique situation. We're a trade school.
Yeah, and I'm, it's a great program. We've seen, you know, the stuff that they've done, and a lot of kids have come out of there, and it's, it's a really great opportunity for kids.
Right.
But, these are say, the budget keeps going up for the Vote Tech, and it keeps going down for the school, and people are having, myself included, are having time, trouble reconciling that a little bit.
Right. Well, a lot of it's material costs as well. I mean, we have no control over, we actually, like a textbook, in a regular school, we, we hold on to our textbooks, but we can't hold on to the wire, and the pipe, and the, the wood, and that. We have to replenish those expendables every year, and that's a key cost that separates us from an academic-type high school, is the actual materials we use. You know, and that's a major cost for our budget.
I understand, but I bet the school committee could probably say the same thing about their expenditure.
Well, yes and no. I mean, we could all use...
Right. But I get, you know, where did the original budget, you know, come in, where it's still, you cut, you cut, you cut, and you still have an increase on it? And I, I was the liaison for years from the advisory committee, and there's a formula that, when I asked how you figured it out, everyone laughed at me, 'cause there's no way to figure it out. But, again, how do you...
Well, again, most of our, will be the increase in students.
Right.
Now, if you look on the list here, say, Abington had a tremendous increase in students.
Well, Norwell must have, I assume, at 89%.
Yeah, exactly. And that's most of our costs, you know, it's set by the state, but in Situate's case, it's because we had a couple of extra students that go in there this year.
Is there any chance of going back to them and having them cut deeper? Who's them? Them would be South Shore Vote Tech.
I can always...
To reduce the cost of the debt.
Yeah. I mean, this is our third shot at it, but I can always say that's the recommendation.
How many students from Situate are actually participating? Again, forgive me for...
Forty-five, I think it is.
Forty-five. And the general, what's the, how many students are actually at South Shore Vote Tech?
I'm not 100% sure. It's 500 and so.
500 and so? Okay. The reason why I say that is, I kinda echo what Tony's saying. I mean, I looked at the numbers, and everybody's taking it hit, and with all due respect, I see that the numbers are level funded or something. To some extent, it might be easier, and I know this is being somewhat, looking at it in a very kind of strict way, but, you know, easier from the South Shore Vote Tech to be able to go from town to town and say, "Well, it's level funded, we don't need to have you cut back," whereas most towns, if it were within it, they'd be cutting a lot of stuff. So I just, I'm just concerned only because we're all cutting back in our town, everywhere.
Oh, absolutely.
And I, I could agree with Tony that, you know, maybe South Shore should consider trying to do something similarly. I mean, I realize that our cost is going up 5 and 1/2%, and I know you said that obviously it would be 10% two years ago, but...
Right.
It is what it is now, and I certainly think it would be helpful if they would take a look at it and say, you know...
We can always look at it again, but like I say, that percentage is mostly the additional. I think we picked up two students this year. And to educate a student, by state standards, I think it's approximately $14,000 a year for a vocational student.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying the program. Look, what, what you've done with the Marine Center, and all over town, absolutely, it's just tough times, and our school's taking it hit. I kind of would think that South Shore should also take a look and try to tell everybody.
We are taking it hit. We could do a lot more. But, you know, level funded is, is what it is, and I understand, I mean, we're all going through it. But with a vocational school, it is a little tougher in the, the cost of the materials that do drive our costs up. You know, technology and things like, all these things cost money. We have to have, like just in an automotive, we have to have state-of-the-art equipment to get our certification, so we can train these students to go out and become protective mechanics. If we don't have that, we start cutting back into that. We're at bare bones now. We start cutting back into it. Our students could be trained in automotive, but they wouldn't be certified and virtually un-hireable. That's the thing we have to, that's what separates us from the academic. The academic kids mostly will go on to college for further training. These kids are going right from high school to a job that a prospective employer is looking for them to come out, almost, like an electrician, a kid will come out, he's got two years of his apprenticeship, pretty well done. You don't have the same from academic. And with the vocational, you're getting an academic certification as well as a high school diploma. So you're getting, I taught in a vocational school, so I'm very passionate about it. I, I have my degrees in education, I've taught in the high schools, I've taught in vocational schools. And you get more bang for your dollar from a vocational school, which a lot of people do not realize. They come out, they are employable. They have skills, they have certifications, and they are employable right from, they don't have to go on for further training, as some do in the academic. These, these kids come out with electrical, automotive, heating ventilation, air conditioning, carpentry. They are certified, ready to go. And it does work for the employer.
Sean?
It does. I hired one a year and a half ago, and he's still working for me. He's a great student. I just had one other question. I know with different years, you'd open up enrollment to towns that are not listed here, and maybe if enrollment in these towns is down, then maybe you'd go to Marshfield or something like that, and do they pay the same rate?
They, they pay a rate that's set by the state, which could fluctuate. Fortunately, South Shore Vote Tech is at the highest scale.[1726.36] Whatever the highest scale is, they determine the cost of educating a student at vocational school. Now, the double-edged sword we have at South Shore is during tough economic times, vocational school membership does, enrollment does go up. And we have to service our eight towns. So we don't, uh, we love to get the out of town, out of town because they just add money to our budget, which takes it out of our towns. And that's why, on some other years, our costs are lower. But now we're educating our own students, we're almost at our maximum amount of students that we're allowed. So we have to come up with the money instead of Marshfield, uh, Hingham, or someone like that, sending students. I mean, it is a double-edged sword. We'd love to have them for the money.
Right.
But we want, our first priority is to educate our own students first.
Right, okay.
Go ahead.
Um, just to follow up on some of these comments, as you know, Jack, I'm a strong supporter of everything you folks do. But I just, and I'm glad we don't have to vote on this right now, um, but my, my bottom line here is, this is part of our school system. We contribute money, we contribute students, it's part of our school system. So I don't see it as a Situate school system versus the South Shore schools. They're all part of the same school system. But having said that, you know, when the time comes, I'm going to have a tough time voting for an increase for essentially one aspect of our school system when the other aspect of the school system is really taking it, is, is flat or, or less than flat funded. So that's where I am at this point. And as Jamie said earlier, everything's fluid and moving up and down, but, you know, at face value, that's where I am at this point.
Yes, as is a preliminary, it also is based on what we're going to get from the state.
Yep, exactly.
What I think I'm hearing and I think you're hearing too is, is, thank you for this, and we certainly appreciate all that you do with South Shore, VOTEC for the South Shore students that are there and for all of the students that are there. But when you go back and there'll be, as you said, future budget meetings, looking at these, we'd appreciate it if you bring our sentiments back to your board and, and say that, you know, we would like to see, and we recognize, as we do with our own school committee, we recognize the, the trials and tribulations that go with it, but it may be a lot easier to pass this at town meeting if we were more in line with level funded.
There is one point, a further point before we end this that I'd like to point out. One thing about South Shore VOTEC, while we're all vocational schools compared to town schools or city schools is we are a municipality in and of ourselves. We pay for our own snow plowing, building maintenance and things like that, where a town picks up plowing, things like that. So there are additional costs. So like I say, you cannot cross.
Sure.
Yep.
Absolutely, there's so many different variables between the two types of education that we have going here. But a lot of people don't understand, we are a municipality and then, for lack of a better term.
That's an important distinction. Well, technically, our school is going to be paying, you know, we allocate cost to our schools also for water and plowing and all that sort of stuff too. So it's, it's not as different as, as you might think. Um, one last point, and I know you're our liaison, I imagine that your cohorts who are going to Whitman and going to all these other towns are getting the same feedback as us.
As I'm getting it here, I can imagine those. I'm glad I'm in Situate, not Whitman, yes.
We are too.
Abington, you know, or Hassett.
So again, we're not, we're not, we're not putting down the program or the system, we just want you to go back and we want you to cut our costs.
Absolutely.
Tweak it.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jack. Uh, treasure collector, Jane. Jane is going to have the next four or five, I think, anyway.
Seven, I think.
Seven, whatever, close enough.
Need to take a break.
Close enough for government work.
Okay, Doeman on the agenda, right?
I guess, yeah, why don't you just go down as listed on the agenda and, and, uh...
I don't know if you're doing a different format than other years because we did a different format, um...
Can we just maybe close on to us?
Something I said?
Oh. Bye, Jane.
Okay. Um, well, my total budget for the treasure collector portion, my day-to-day office operations.
You're going to do the treasure collector now? Treasure?
Yeah, I'm just following.
I'm going to, I'm going to reclude myself because
Oh, okay.
my bank does business with the treasure itself. I'm going to take a walk.
Well, I have six more after that, so don't go far.
I won't go far. It won't be a long walk, I don't do long walks.
Okay. Um, so the to, total budget that I had requested, um, was actually three hundred eight thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars. I saw that Tricia, um, as she did, I know with some of the other departments or all the other departments perhaps, um, did a couple of cuts. Um, basically, I don't know if you want me to go down item by item or what would you like me to?
I think just a general overview and any major discrepancies or issues that, that you see coming forth. I mean, we've got your mission statement, we've got the other documents, but you know, at that level.
Right, um... Just noticing something. Okay, um, basically, i, i, in terms of a comparison between FY-ten and FY-eleven, there really aren't many changes. Um, the salaries are obviously the biggest chunk of my budget. Um, we have three full-time people at thirty-five hours and two part-time at thirty hours, so, who are almost full-time, so. Um, and that figure doesn't include any raises for three of us, only two of them are still eligible for step increases. Um, I don't get step increases. Julie's at the top of the line, um, and Sharon is at the top of the line as well. Um, two of my staff are eligible for longevity, um, and then the one percent match is the other item. Um, in terms of, we try and, and make do, it's been a very difficult FY-ten year, I have to say, so I'm very concerned about FY-eleven. Um, some of my line items, the support services is the largest one, and that's where I pay for the payroll. I have made, made a change, as I'm sure you recall, by converting the town payroll and having some savings by getting rid of ADP. Um, so there were some additional costs this year because of the conversion, um, but I'm hoping to see those changes, the cost savings in the next couple of years. Um, the other one is the postage. I see that Tricia has cut it a thousand and, um, the postage is the budget town-wide for all the vendor checks that go out every week from all the warrants. Um, also, uh, it's the postage for all the town, um, bill mailings for all, not the water and sewer, that's enterprise fund, but, um, for the real estate tax bill. The town only mails twice a year, as you know, with two remit slips on each. Um, and then, um, any demand bill mailings, I have to do. The world being what it is nowadays, I've probably been sending more plus the increase of the postage. So, um, my postage budget is really tough to maintain. Um, but if I go over the twenty-four thousand, if that's what you vote, then I'll just have to look to that later. But there's nothing that I can do to cut back. Um, I've tried to do what I can. We used to provide lockbox envelopes within, um, the tax bills for people. It, it helps them, um, return it, I think, if you make life easier, but I've cut back on that. I now have the prisoners printing our envelope at some cost savings.
Jane, what's, what technical services? It was zero last year and it's seventy-seven, seventy-seven twenty this year?
Seven thousand.
That's with some changes that Tricia is making. Um, we used to pay for the licensing of the town administrator's budget for some reason. When they had CJ software, that's how it was done, so I think to try and.
So this used to be in a different budget, Tricia, and we've kind of allocated.
It was in town administrators and Jane's in charge of it, so it's a...
So that's the majority of the increase for the, your budget is technically flat except for that line item.
It's actually, yeah, it's a little lower, just for the reconciliation, because my budget went down by the equivalent.
Right.
So...
Do we have any other questions from the board?
No.
Jane, you good?
On to the next one?
Where else is that? Okay, let me go get.
Just told Joe.
Someone get Mr. Norton, please. He's good on the other stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The next one, well, will be the tax.
Yeah, could you, let's just wait for Joe if we could. Or should we move ahead? What's the sense of forward?
Forge forward.
Forge forward? Okay, we'll forge forward.
Okay. Um, we've done something a little different as well for the tax title budget. In the past, it was raised on the recap, which the DOR is not happy about. I'm not used to in my career doing it that way, but, um, we have a lot of accounts in tax title and I am pursuing foreclosure on quite a few of them. Um, I'm working with Attorney Capola quite a bit to kind of catch up the past couple of years. You have to wait a period of time after you put people in tax title, but we do have a lot of old items there. So some people unfortunately need, it's additional legal costs that we pay. Um, but if we collect the money, if it motivates people to pay, although it's not directly offset in the budget, but it does help to collect those monies. So, um, that is estimated at twenty-five thousand for FY-eleven.
A quick question for Tricia, Mary. Is, this isn't the line item that we put, it is the line item.
Yes, so now it'll be, maybe it'll be one of the shared budgets.
But I wonder where we put it in our formula? Is it in there twice?
Is it in one of those other amounts to be raised?
No, no, but you know how we have the expense for overlay and then the twenty-five grand for tax title?
Yeah, that's where we, that's...
But if it's in the budget now too, it may be twice.
That'll become one of the shared budgets instead of being with the overlay.
Well, this will be a shared budget. Okay. Right, so it'll just move down to the bottom of the formula. Okay.
Jane, with the, with the, um, the cost, the twenty-five thousand, obviously that amount of money comes back in the event that the people were to pay back and pay off.
Right.
So in other words, it potentially could be a zero number if, if the town's able to get the money back. It's the cost to, from the attorney's fees, those fees could actually be taken back.
When we collect it, they do come back.
Correct.
But it's not a direct offset, um, in accounting for that, so we just bring the money in, so.
That's a good point.
You might notice too, is it's running short for FY-ten.
Right.
It's on the warrant. Um, the tax title is running short. And that was intentional, Jane came to me and said, I'm running over. And, um, but as, I think she very well explained, there's a huge return because when those folks pay off, that goes to the general fund and gets certified as free cash. So maybe it won't be as much as twenty-five thousand next year, we don't know, but it's probably going to be thirty-five or forty this year. And, um, it wasn't probably very transparent to you because Mary just put it on the recap and that's not the way to do it.
So where does the, um, like John just brought up a real good point, if you do collect the money, you get your legal fees back too. Where does that money go?
General, general fund, it's all general.
So it'll just come in, it'll come in our levy number then?
Yeah, it comes in as tax lien.
So that's the number over the levy?
Yeah.
And then it gets broken out. So this, so one time, it, this doesn't get revolving, it goes, if it goes back into the general fund. So is this, there's like a housekeeping article, which is kind of?
It's just another operating budget that had been raised on the recap because the mass laws said that if you didn't provide for it in your budget, then you must provide for on your recap, the amount of money needed for tax foreclosure.
So now we're providing for it in our budget.
So now we're providing for it in our budget.
Okay.
So...
Okay, makes sense.
Um, I don't know if Joe will come back in this, the contributory group insurance. Um, there is an increase, not surprisingly, I'm sure, um...
Let's, let's wait for him on that one.
Oh, okay.
Maybe do like the federal tax, maybe? Which, non-contrib, that's good.
Okay.
Nine-ten?
Yep. I actually inherited this year from, um, Mary Gallagher, because it just made sense. I do the contributory pension budget, so it just made sense. And, um, as I'm sure you recall, there are five survivors now at this point who were town employees before the retirement system was put into effect. So, um, this is the budget for that. We pay them through payroll, um, once a month at the end of the month. Want to move on?
Questions, anybody?
Yeah, I mean, it's not optional, these are people that were on the system before the Plymouth County one was in effect, so.
Would you like me to do the, um...
Okay, hold on just a sec, Joe, we've done, um, we did the treasure collector, tax foreclosure and non-contributory. So maybe we could go back to nine-fourteen? Is that okay? All right, I'm over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Rachel.
Okay. Um, as I was just saying, there is an increase. Um, I at first had, upon the recommendation of Plymouth County Retirement, used an eleven percent increase, but then at a meeting in December, they changed after nine percent. I used the enrollment from November, it's an ever-changing number. Um, tough to gauge if there are layoffs, there could be, you know, this could be overstated. But, um, that's the figure I have right now based on those enrollment dates, which is sometime in November, I could tell you exactly when, but...
Why is that so? Just a quick comment, any overage that this will have will need to cover unemployment on the other side anyway, so.
Yeah.
And this is our, this is our largest single line item budget, isn't it, I think? What is it, three?
Three point one.
Point one?
Yeah, four point eight, almost five million.
Four point eight, almost five million.
Yeah.
Four point eight nine five.
Insurance, yeah.
Yep, sorry.
Any questions? No, okay. Um, Plymouth County Retirement, that's a set amount. There is an increase this year, that's, um, nine-eleven. Um, Tricia and I had gone to a meeting back in the fall. Uh, we were aware that there was going to be an increase. Um, I, I had put in the, the lower number, we each year get two numbers, one is for semi-annual payment and the other one is for an annual payment. So, um, we saved sixty-three thousand dollars if we pay it. Um, I mean, it's tough, we do it, it's due July first, but, um, there is a savings, so.
And just basically, this, this pays for the retirement of town employees?
Right.
Simple as that.
And it's a set number, it's not negotiable, so.
It's up four hundred thousand dollars. Um, there has been a bill filed to push out the funding schedule. I had Jane check with the county retirement folks last week to see if they're inclined to have any wiggle room based on that. But, um, at this point, they're not moving off the number. Um, I've had some communications from the other South Shore managers about sort of pushing that discussion because it is up for us four hundred thousand, which is quite a bit of money.
What's that percent? Is it eleven or twelve?
It's thirteen-something.
Yeah.
It's in the front section of the budget.
So, Tricia, help. They recalc, I mean, obviously the stock market goes down, they become short on the funds that they need to pay people's retirements.
Yeah.
And how often do they re, recalculate and say, oh, we're...
And there was a question about that at the meeting we attended, as to what date they should use, whether or not they should use the January two thousand nine number. I think that their assets have improved, that they have recouped a lot of the funds that had been lost, at least that's what they had been saying. But I think they don't want to disperse those funds and those savings at this point, they want to keep it in reserves.
Right, it, it's thirteen point oh-three percent that it's up. And, um, the thing is, is that it should really be higher based on, they had their actuaries there and did a presentation. So this is like, split the difference between, um, the funding schedule and the investment income loss and the loss of the sheriff's department, which is a huge hit to the member communities. So it's really, even as high as it is, it wasn't where they wanted to be.
Did we ever hear back? I, I emailed Hedlin about that. Did anyone ever hear back from him? Remember how we, we ended up taking the, the liabilities from the sheriff's department, not the asset?
I thought I heard that that was resolved, but I haven't been to a meeting.
I haven't heard that, and I don't remember a lot of going back. And I think it's, what it does show is sometimes you, uh, things that happen on a state level like months, six months ago, or whatever it was, when the state took over the sheriff's department, and I think everyone probably read about it, but didn't have, didn't realize at the time what effect it has on every town, Plymouth County. And it has a major effect and, and things like that go unrecognized quite often by people, including ourselves, until you come in here and say, you know, this is what, this is what happened as a result of that action by the state.
And, you know, and I just thought of something and it's back on the contributory health insurance budget because we will get the final number at some point in the spring. And I think last year we made a change before town meeting because we got the actual rate. So that's something I'd have to look at at the time, the budget that's, um, four point nine eight five, so.
One last question for Tricia. Is it, is that supposed to go up next year? And how many years is it supposed to go up thirteen percent?
It is, I mean, that's why the funding schedule is really important. They have to review the funding schedule every three years. They just did it last year, so they have two more years. But the bill that's been filed would push it out from two, twenty-thirty to twenty-forty. So that would be a considerable change. But it's going to go up every year, maybe not this dramatically, but it's still going to go up. And, you know, what's happening is folks are living longer and so, um, they come into the system sixty-two, sixty-five, between sixty-two and sixty-five. So that, that's really driving it. Payroll wages are a factor of it as well. If we pay people more than other communities, then that drives our assessment as well. So there's a number of different factors.
Now, according to them, they say that the current employees with the nine plus two percent, two for the over thirty thousand, so they're paying eleven. But it's the other people, as Tricia said. two for the over 30,000, so they're paying 11, but it's the other people, as Tricia said, who are retiring, that they're contributing, no, they had contributed only 5%.
It doesn't work with 11 though. It doesn't work, period. The math doesn't, does not work.
One number is bigger than the other number.
Right. And like Tricia said, people live longer, so.
Which isn't a bad thing now. I'm going to make that perfectly clear.
Anyway, um...
But we can't solve that problem.
No. Dictated what it is, federal taxes.
Federal taxes, this is the Medicaid.
Yep.
Medicaid.
The FICA portion. Um, and I saw that Tricia had reduced that number, which I can live with again. The expectation is there'll be layoffs at the school. I used a projection from, I used the actual paid-to-date through November or December, I think, probably November, and then I estimated forward to the end of fiscal 10 to get my figure. Um, and then, uh, Tricia reduced that, not really that much, but, um, going to unemployment. Yep. So. Any questions on that?
Not really.
Nope.
Okay.
Any debt, can I press?
Uh, the debt budget is really complex. As, as you know, um, Tricia had a discuss, discussion with you about whether or not to delay the bond, which I was going to do next month in March of 2010, and put it out to 2011. Part of the increase on this budget is due to mandatory pay downs. I've been rolling this bond for a couple of ye, I mean, the ban, the bond anticipation note, the short term, for a couple of years. Now, when you do that, once you go forward into that third year, you know, when it's two years and one month or whatever, you have to do a pay down. So, um, this is, as you know, just the general fund budget. It includes the debt exclusion, so, um, it's about half and half. I think, um, tax-supported is 1.2 million and then the debt exclusion is about 1 million. And these have been already in existence, we've discussed them before, if you have any questions. I do have my list here of, of what the proposed budget is because this includes what's in place already, what has been bonded for long-term principal and interest, plus the proposed debt.
Any questions on that?
Well, when you say proposed debt, you're just talking about the ban?
Um, I'm talking about what's, yes, the, the ban, um...
Just stuff that's already been authorized? So there's no new purchases in this number?
No.
So the, a capital plan of zero?
Um, oh, nothing for the capital plan. Um, everything that I was aware of back in November is in this debt budget for the general fund.
Just so everybody knows, that this, the stuff you're talking about is stuff that was authorized at the last town meeting.
Right, yeah.
It's nothing, nothing new. And at some point, capital plan is going to come before us with...
Well, capital plan also includes enterprise stuff, though.
That, what, that doesn't affect the budget?
But this doesn't affect, so when you say no capital plan, just wanted to make it clear, though, enterprise fund things might come over with capital expenditures, but they'd have to be funded through the enterprise fund, so that's not part of this.
Right, well, more importantly, her number doesn't have anything new in it.
Correct, yeah.
Level debt. And I, I do the, um, five enterprise fund debt budgets and there is some new money in those. But they present them separately to you, so.
Now, when you have to pay principal down on that ban?
Yeah.
What, what time, like, is the time period shorter than it would have been? Because what do you save, about 25 or 30,000 by not bonding it?
The issuance costs, but the town's been getting premiums and, um, that has been paying for the issuance costs. Um, but what happens is the ban is maturing March 19th, so I'm going to roll them out for a year. So then we would have to do the pay downs in March of 2011. And then we'd have the bond and the first bond payment wouldn't be into FY 12.
Right, but the pay down is over how many years? Like, if we were going to bond something for 10 years, but they made you do a pay down over three years, you know what I mean, like the asset? How much principal do you have to pay for a pay down?
Um, I have a schedule of all the pay downs if you'd like to.
No.
I can email it.
Just tell me if it makes sense to do it or not.
Just curious, but not that curious.
You still know the life of the asset?
If, it, depending on the statutory limit on how long you can borrow for, in some of them, um, you're going to have to vote the increased life because it's on department equipment, it's five years, unless you vote otherwise, which, you know, in our discussions, that financial forecast and such over the past couple of years, we've talked about. So, because they have a useful life, some of it's DPW equipment. So they can only, if I've short-term for three years and you're going to vote it has a 10-year life, then it only goes out seven more years.
Your answer might, yeah, so you have to put the number of years...
Is that what you want to know?
Yeah, with the asset.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
Welcome.
Anything else for the board? Nothing else, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, good night.
Uh, we haven't been taking a break at all during the past year, but this is a rather lengthy agenda. I'll leave it up to the board where we're going to go into the town meeting articles so you can see what we got left. Does the board feel like they want to take a five-minute break to stretch their legs?
Yeah.
Yep, done. Five minutes. Thank you. Thank you, going back in the session. Uh, we're now on town meeting articles. In your packet, the first article, there's compensation for elected officials. Uh, selectmen, chairman legitimate expenses 1,500, selectmen at $2,000, that's four, at $500 each. Uh, chairman and legitimate expenses $1,200 and assessors, uh, $800. That chairman and legitimate expenses is $1,200 for the assessors. Personal services for the town clerk, $57,371. That's article one. Motion to accept, uh, to support and not support.
I'll move article one, move to support article one.
And I'll second.
It's written, is that how he's written?
Relation to move, to move article one as written. Uh, Bernice?
Do I have an opportunity?
You do.
When we last met on this particular subject, I, we disagreed and it's clear that we disagreed tonight. I mentioned in the memo that I, I sent about a week or so ago to you that I would like to speak to this article on town meeting. And, um, the reason I would like to speak to it is I have gone back over 20 years of the town clerk salary. And one of the comments that was made the last time I was here was if you start low, it takes some time to build up your salary. I realized as I thought about that afterwards, well, this is about one of the oldest positions that exists in town government, the town clerk. And it's centuries old. And it's time, really, I think, to think about it as being a real job. I'm considered a manager. I go to managers' meetings. I have not been told that there's anything that I am not expected to do that other managers are expected to do. Despite that, despite the responsibility of the position and my understanding of part of the way a judgment is made about the salary for any position, a managerial salary, is the liability of the position to the town. I don't think there's any doubt whatsoever that the liability that the town clerk bears for this town every day, in every category I can think of in terms of what I do each day, is very, very large. I have looked at the salaries of other managers. I make almost $10,000 less than the next closest manager to me. If you take an average of the salaries, the average salary here is 75,000 plus for managers. I make $55,700. I made $55,700 last year because it was frozen. And going back and looking through the 20 years of the salary for the town clerk, we have heard several times tonight about taking a hit because the times are bad. It looks like the town clerk has taken a hit in good and bad times. And I think this is a very, very difficult time. I work every day with a budget and I try to stay within it. I have just done two elections, which were not in the budget and not on the schedule, and I know the efforts that were made in order to make that as least costly to the town as possible. I think the disparity in the payment, the compensation to the town clerk is not understandable. And I have a feeling that the townspeople would be very surprised, as I was, when I saw all of the budgets for the very first time this year. And in seeing all of them, found that the compensation for the town clerk was so unbelievably different from the remainder of the managers. I have been told that it takes time. One of the things I also observed is the number of departments that are now run by managers. Originally, maybe at most 20 years ago, they were run by committees and then gradually they had managers. Those managers have been in those positions certainly for a shorter period of time than the town clerk. The other thing I would like to mention is that as a part of being an elected town clerk, and I'm honored to be an elected town clerk, the town clerk does not get longevity. The town clerk has no buyback when it comes to, um, vacations or to sick leave. There is a $650 compensation for registrar, which is entitled, the town clerk is entitled to in this town, based on the number of people who are registered voters in the town. That compensation has not been included in my salary and it's voted as a separate line and should not be included in my salary. And I have not received it. And I think that the townspeople are really going to be interested to know that the Board of Selectmen, perhaps because this is an elected position and does not come under the Board of Selectmen, does not come under the town administrator, it is an independent position, which is also at the same time requires a very delicate balance of working with everyone while remaining independent. I do think the salary is something that should be reconsidered. It is a very difficult time to be going against the tide and it's a very embarrassing thing to be going against the tide. But I think it is appropriate for the position of town clerk to be properly compensated. And I think when you compare what has been done with salaries across the board, this is a case of the town clerk is not a part of a personnel plan. Maybe there should be a separate personnel plan and a separate set of criteria. But I would like to know what criteria the town clerk does not meet that warrants this level of compensation. And I have yet to be told what that is.
Thank you.
I just have a question, I wasn't at the last meeting.
Yes.
And so, and, but I'm, I'm hearing you speak here and, uh, you, just something that you said there near the end, Bernice, was that because your position is, is independent, were you implying that there's some sort of feeling from this board that your salary is low because you have an independent position? Is there some sort of retribution going on here?
No, I don't think it's retribution at all. I think it's perhaps oversight.
Okay.
Because it is independent, it is separate. It's, it's not considered, at the same time, you're looking at a personnel plan and you're looking at perhaps overall, the fact that there are perhaps unions that are covering.
Okay, I understand your point now.
That type of thing. There's nothing at all that I take as personal in any of this. I do think it's a real professional concern. I think you have a professional concern with having good people do this job. And I've heard several times, not tonight, but several other times as I watch the meetings, that you get what you pay for. Well, in this case, I think you're getting a lot more than what you're paying for.
Thank you, as, as, uh, as you know, Bernice, as you mentioned at the start of your discussion, regardless of what the board does tonight, you have the, right, the, the right, the option to go to town meeting and, and have town meeting vote what they feel is just.
Yes.
So I think you're aware of that and, and, uh...
Just a, just a quick comment, you know, I haven't been on the advisory committee for six years and, and here for a couple, and having looked at the budget each year, I can say unequivocally that that's not the way it's looked at. I mean, we already, we always got your budget and it, it didn't matter where it was funded from. We were kind of just looking at it as, as another department. Now, in terms of the dollar, um, you know, I never really took the time to say, okay, was man, one manager, the manager, you know, it's just income. Most of the pay that I saw over the last years just came at the recommendation of the town administrator. So it, it really wasn't, and it, I can't remember in any meeting that I've been for, for those eight years, where we've ever said, commented on anybody's number.
I don't, I don't believe you have and I very much agree with that. I don't think anyone's even noticed. Last year, I wrote a memo when I was level funded to all of you. And I pointed out that that was level funding. And I was concerned that it was level funding for an elected official. And that the concern I had was that my salary was visible because it's in an article by itself. Whereas everyone else's is included as a part of essentially the bottom line. I don't think anyone at any time, I served on the advisory board for three years. I never specifically looked at the manager's salary. I never saw that there was this kind of a discrepancy because I looked at it as the bottom line of what that department was doing, whether it was up or down.
Right, but my point is that I don't think that it was ever looked at that way, as you just admitted, you didn't look at it that way either back then.
Right.
And it really was just at, the town administrator came and said, "This is what it is and this is what the income should be and it goes and coincides with this or that." And it was voted, approved for, I mean, I don't even know how many years you've been doing this, but every year that I've been doing it, you've been doing it, so.
I've been doing it for seven years and when I have put down my salary, which essentially has been the town administrator's recommendation, I had no idea of anyone else's salary. This is my first time ever seeing every manager's salary and that's why you're getting the response you're getting from me now.
No, no, I understand, I'm just saying, it wasn't at the, it wasn't at anyone in the advisory board or any of the selectmen's, um, really agenda or, um, or really thought process to manipulate the numbers or, you know...
I don't think there has been anything intentional about any of this. What I am saying is I think it's very important to know that you have oversight over all of this. And the town pretty much votes what you recommend. My bet is that the majority of people in town think exactly the same thing I thought, which is I am not paid well, but I bet no one else in town is paid well either. It wasn't until I saw salaries and realized how poorly I was paid that frankly, it, it just seemed, the disparity is unjust and I'm looking for fairness.
Sean?
You compared yourself to other managers?
Yes.
Have you compared yourself to other town clerks and other towns similar to situant?
Yes. And out of 12, um, the, I think the 10th law was paid.
Do you have that, um, have you given that to us before?
That's in your budget.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernice. We have the article in front of us. And the recommended, uh, salary for Bernice is 57, 300, $371.
I had made the motion to support this and Sean had seconded it. Just, this is an increase of?
4%.
4%?
Um, it's an equity adjustment of 3%, which I don't know if it was clear in Mrs. Brown's comments, but there is a raise for her for the 3% that she didn't get last year.
But the Board of Selectmen and the assessors aren't getting any increase?
That's correct, actually, your expenses were cut.
Okay. So, so essentially, the increase that maybe she should have gotten last year is this year and this year it's flat, just like everybody else's?
It's an equity adjustment and there's no con, any increases in the FY 11 proposed for any other staff.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Revolving funds.
Move article two.
Motion to move article two?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Article three. Article 3. Stabilization for the revolving fund for B stickers, fees, et cetera.
Move Article 3.
Second.
Hold on, I wrote a note up here, I just want to see what I meant.
Yeah, okay.
What did I mean?
Didn't you get it?
Before local resents spent, I think we cleared that up. Somehow you and Mary worked out the change in local receipts over the other stuff. That must be what I was referring to.
Article 4.
Three we have to vote.
Three, excuse me. All in favor of 3?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. Article 4, the capital improvement plan.
Not yet.
Not yet. So we'll postpone that, we'll give that a later date. Fiscal year 2011 operating budget, now.
No, we're not doing that.
Not yet.
No, we're not going to do that. Okay?
The next one's 11, right?
Six.
No, we're doing, I'll move this.
We're going to do the enterprise funds.
We'll do 6 first. I'll move Article 6, the waterways enterprise fund.
I'll second that.
I wasn't going to second.
Discussion on Article 6. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I just wanted to add that this number's changed from the number that's in Mark's budget, because there's an appropriation for the Marine Center in there for O and M, operations and maintenance.
Yep. And does this have a capital plan in it? It does.
As their, his P and I's, principal and interest.
It does. For new purchases in this year.
Golf course has been postponed, has it?
One second, Joe. I'm sorry. Did they, the interest for new purchases, is that in there?
His capital?
I don't know what he has before his capital plan for this year.
Yeah.
See, I don't think we can vote these yet. Any of them?
Capital, does Mark have capital?
Well, until the capital plan gets done and you figure out what the interest is for this year.
Right, because I don't know, Jane hasn't gotten anything, I don't believe.
Yeah, you're right, Tony. This is his operating.
Just operating. And this, yeah.
But interest is part of the operation.
Well, it depends on when you go out to ban. If you didn't ban at all next fiscal year, so what, she actually, if you banned near the end of the fiscal year, she's not going to.
It wouldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't be an interesting until 2012 anyway.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, he, he did.
So we can vote it?
You can vote it.
I'm hearing that. Kim, as a golf enterprise fund, we.
That's for the 23rd.
That's going on the 23rd, due to the recommendations of the Bob Sanderson, which we haven't heard yet.
So we need to vote 6, Article 6?
6 will vote, y'all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. 7 was postponing, 8 waterways enterprise, wastewater enterprise.
That's postponed, next week.
They're both hold those.
So it's a transfer.
Article 10?
Yep. Article 10.
Move Article 10.
Second.
Discussion. Article 10, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 11 is a stabilization fund.
Move Article 11.
Oh, wait till we.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Is the, is the language any different the way it was last year?
Nope, it's the exact same.
Where it says here, the levy, net the levy limit, does that not include the expenses? So the levy comes in, we think the levy's coming in at 51 million, and it comes in at 52 million. That delta's a million. It doesn't deal with the expenses deducted from that?
It does with what we need to raise, total amount we can raise.
Right.
Okay, for a levy. The total amount we need for our budget, which if it's less than the total levy, then the difference between that will then go into stabilization.
So let's say our budget is $50 million, and our expenses are $50 million, and we raise $50 million and $1. That $1 goes, and then it's a whole nother thing that takes, if we only spend 49 million, that million that goes to free cash is.
At the end of the year, and that's free cash.
Okay, so it's just above the levy limit that we are projecting here for our budget.
You just don't know what's going to happen by the time you do set your tax rate.
Right.
So this at least gives us an opportunity to put company in.
So it's only the revenue stream?
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. The water main project relocation has been withdrawn.
Right.
Chapter 91 liability, Article 13. This is a yearly article, I believe.
And this is the same wording as previous years for 91?
Exactly, yes.
Move Article 2. I'll move the article dealing with Mass General laws, Chapter 91 liability.
Second. Moves and seconded. Discussion. All in favor? All right.
Joe, can I just to get back to Tony's point, and the stabilization and what Mary just said, in '09, that difference was 170,000. Last year it was 9,000. So it's not a big relief anymore. In FY08, it was 486,000.
Right.
So it's a number that's changed dramatically. And so, you know, I think it's good to put in context when people ask, you know, why are the challenges on the revenue in addition to local aid? Is we had 2 million in free cash four years ago, we had a substantial amount of money we could put into stabilization because of that article, and those are all gone right now. So that revenue stream that we had before that we were generating is also, you know, adding to these challenges we have in our revenue.
But that may have been caused by new growth. If we projected new growth to be 500, it really came in at 7, then all that money would go to stabilization.
Right, yeah. And then you had the overlay issue too.
Right.
Do we vote that, Kim?
Yes.
We did? 16, workers' comp trust fund statute. Tricia, would you explain that?
Sure, this is, I talked quite a bit about it at my budget review. The workers' compensation is, it's Chapter 41, whatever it is here. Hold on.
4013A.
Forty. So 13A and 13C. 13A, when the town accepted this, means that we appropriate a bunch of money into it each year, 160,000 traditionally, and that money comes out. If there's any balance left on June 30th, Mary has to move it all out into a special revenue fund. What's traditionally happening is you have a deficit in that account based on active workers' compensation claims, so Mary's moving it over, because that's Section 13A. Section 13C allows you to really operate it like a true trust fund, which means all the money, all the interest, stay with it. And, and that way, we don't have this problem with the deficit or stuff like that. So she has, we ran the numbers today, there's about 180,000 in the revenue account, special revenue account. But the operating budget for workers' comp has $18,000 left in it, and it's only February. So she has to do this manual thing whenever we're, now it'll just be a trust fund, and we can operate it that way. So really, in my mind, it's a, it's a change in the financing, but it's important because you're just going from Section 13A to 13C as allowed under the statute. And on the good note, 2, we bound the coverage for stop-loss insurance last Wednesday. So there's a specific dollar, 350,000 maximum exposure. That premium is $33,000 a year. I increased the budget 40,000, as you know, and that's just essentially going to cover that, but I think, you know, we can feel, breathe a little easier in terms of going in the right direction in terms of the management of this account going forward.
Did you get all that book? Because I have to write it all down.
So one claim can knock over $350,000 with this policy?
Our maximum exposure on any one claim is 350, and we have to think of it in the context of someone in their 30s getting permanently disabled based on a work-related injury. We have two right now that are over 150, approaching 150,000. So obviously, we could go to 300,000 stop-loss or whatever, but this is a start in the right direction, because the premium is like a 10, $8,000 difference. We looked, I looked at all the specific dollars. But this is something, as you know, that it was, after IT, this was my first concern, so I think we're good now.
Where did we see, we were somewhere, and someone brought it up about a policeman getting shot, and we said, do we have this insurance? Where, where? Yep.
Well, we have a premium now for the IOD. We're on a, like, you know, an insurance premium. This is self-funded for us. And it's also liquid, but again, you should have, and I talked about this at my budget review, 3/4 of a million in there probably, because it's a percentage of your total payroll and personnel.
Baby steps.
Yeah, baby steps.
Okay, did we vote that? No, motion's been made.
Article 16 is written.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. 17, educational incentive for police officers. Tricia?
This I have as a placeholder. If the board's not comfortable voting it tonight, they don't have to. We can talk about it at a later meeting. As I'm sure you read the newspaper today, the police department has filed a lawsuit against the town for its failure, alleged failure to pay the Quinn bill distribution that was due to them January 15. As you know, this is an issue statewide, and it's being dealt with with a number of communities. The issue of contention is that the town has language in its collective bargaining agreement that says it does not have to make its contribution if the state does not make its equal contribution. But there is a matter of dissension, because it does allegedly reference another state law that said that this particular statute, the Quinn bill, was exempt. So given that the town was very clear in 1999 that it accepted the Quinn bill and educational incentive for officers with the expectation that the Commonwealth would reimburse it by 50%, and has now discontinued as July 1, 2009, the entire program was funded at 50 million in FY09, it's now 10 million by the state. I think it's for town meeting to consider whether we should revoke acceptance of the Quinn bill, because in fact, it no longer exists.
Where this is in flux, more or less, I would suggest that we don't vote it one way or the other until we see what happens. I mean, let's, we could vote this tonight and have it all changed by a vote of somebody.
That's fine, I would wait until your last gasp meeting.
If the board feels differently, that's fine, but I just assume, hold off on it.
And the other thing, lest my words be misconstrued, we're in bargaining with the police union right now over this issue. I'm hopeful that it can be resolved, but also that I, and I know the board strongly supports educated and qualified police officers. So this really isn't about the town's desire to have competent police officers educated by education and experience, but it's a matter of really the state reneging on its promise to the town. It's $125,000 to us each year, so if we were to make up this difference, no, it would be, it's a $260,000 appropriation with the state previously paying half. 83% of that appropriation to the town has been cut this year. So if we were to fully fund the Quinn bill, it's another 125,000.
But going forward, in future years, would it be 260?
Yes, it's, right.
Okay.
So the, the difference to the town is 0 or 260?
Well, look, the Quinn bill's a reimbursable program, so you are fully funding that money every year, okay? And then the 50% comes back as a reimbursable to the town.
Right. So, but, so the difference isn't between 250 and 125, it's between 250 and 0, because we'd be on the hook for the whole thing.
Right.
All right, so the delta's 125, but the real cost would be 250. All right, so, but, just procedurally, so we will, we will need to vote on this most, I mean, there's potential for us to, to vote on this before town meeting.
Yeah. And you'll just see what develops between now and then, as far as negotiators are concerned, as far as the state's concerned legally.
It's unfortunate the state's doing this to us, but on the other hand, I don't see any choice.
As it stands now, though, so for example, this past fiscal year, did the state reimburse us for the 125?
No, actually, it was less than the 50% last year. I asked Mary to run that, and we ate it to the tune of about $23,000, I think.
And as it stands for this next year, if we don't do anything, then we will fund it ourselves for the 265, under the contract or the agreement.
That's subject to bargaining or revocation, revocation of this statute. The town meeting accepted it.
When you mentioned bargaining, this was agreed to by the union whenever it was done in 1990-something?
1999.
A wording, right?
Yes, just to give you a little history, in 1991, there was a class action suit, because in 1991, the state cut the Quinn bill contribution by 10%. Milton was a lead community.
91?
I think it was 93, maybe, 91, 93. I thought it was 91, Joe.
All right, go ahead, you could be, I'm just.
So it was 11 other communities. I was a town administrator in La Medo then. I was part of the 11 communities in that class action suit, and the legislature ruled, a court judgment ruled, that the legislature could not bind further legislatures in terms of appropriation. So that if a legislature 20 years later or 10 years later decided to cut the appropriation, then that was their right and privilege, because they couldn't be bound by prior legislatures. So what happened over the next 10 years is communities bargained language in their collective bargaining agreements to deal with that, should it ever happen again. And as in our case here at Situate, and a number of other communities I worked in, the language we bargained in good faith across the table was, what happens should the state not do its full 50% contribution? And a variety of communities said they might have bargained, we'll pay it. A number of communities said, we'll only pay the state share. A number of communities aren't paying the state share or have no language at all. So that's why this is a very difficult issue across the Commonwealth, because language either doesn't exist at all, or does exist, but it exists different ways. So we are in a rather stronger position, in my view, than other communities, because we have this language that says we're not responsible. But it's either going to be addressed by the legislature, addressed by a court decision, there's a number of other lawsuits out there, or third, which is my hope and intent, and I'm very optimistic about, it will be resolved at the labor table. So that's where we're at right now.
All the more reason to sit on it until we see what happens.
Tricia, I don't know if you can disclose this or not, but which one of those two did we put in our contract, that we wouldn't match the state, or that we wouldn't do either?
Our language says if the state does not make its contribution, the town of Situate is not responsible for that payment.
So it is the 0 or 260, as we're.
It's the 0 or 260.
Okay, that's postponed. 17, municipal liens. I think this is a new one for us, isn't it?
Yes. Move the Article 17 on municipal liens.
It's actually 18. Article 18?
It depends.
Your numbering's off.
In the book, 17, on the agenda, it's 18. That's why I've been saying I move the article.
Article municipal.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I've been saying that. So I move that, I move that article.
If someone can read that, it's quick enough to.
To see if the town will vote as authorized under MGL Chapter 40, Section 58, to impose a municipal lien charge for the purpose of non-payment of returned check replacement fees with a return check fee and the non-payment of recreation fees or take any other action relative thereto.
My question was, what is recreation fees? What is it? So this is, someone writes you a check and it bounces, and the bank charges you $25, you can then lien them for the $25.
Generally, it would probably be put on their property. That's the lien. Now, it's for their house or for their car. So next time they come to town.
But what is, is recreation, is that just a general term? It has nothing to do with the rec department, right, or?
For municipal liens, and John is right, it goes on the tax bill, and the lien is satisfied first. The town's already adopted to do this. We have it for water bills, we have it for sewer bills, but under the statute, the town meeting has to specifically adopt for what fees it may lien. So these are the two that Jane has recommended, the return check fee and non-payment of recreation fees, so that they would be leaned.
What's the recreation fee?
That's my question.
Well, they're fees for their summer programs or any other programs, winter programs.
So it is rec department.
So you did say like 500, and the check bounce, so you need the 500 plus the return check fee or something like that.
So this is strictly for recreation fees for those two things?
And return check fee.
And return check.
Right, but as they, as they relate to recreation fees?
No. First part, the first part's.
It relates to any check.
Yeah. Okay.
First part, any. Counsel check, you get a lien.
And the second part is?
Return check fee for recreation.
I got you.
Rec department.
A motion?
Moved. All right, that was already made by Mr....
Made and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous. General bylaws, Article 18 I have here, it looks like it's...
Delinquent licenses.
This, Jane and I have requested to be put on the warrant. As you know, we've already accepted the statute that says if any permit, if your taxes are outstanding, then we can, the board or the issuing agency can hold up granting a permit or anything, application or whatever. There's, the statute is vague, though, because some solicitors or town councils read that, that it has to be in arrears a year before, the bill has to be outstanding a year before you can deny, revoke, or suspend. What this statute does is it takes away the 12-month waiting period, subject to our local bylaw, so that anybody who has an outstanding fee to the town, you would not have to issue any, anything before the town. Marriage license, well, I've exempted marriage license in certain exemptions, but...
What are the, that was the only part that confused me, except, why did we choose these two? Bicycle helmets, open burning.
This, is that your pleasure, if you want to keep them or not? This language is verbatim from the town of Norfolk, from where Jane originally hailed from, so this is her language, so...
So if I haven't paid my taxes, then you would say I can't get a bicycle helmet permit?
No, no. It's exempting that.
If it wasn't exempted.
Let's say you want to put a deck on your house, and you need a building permit. If you didn't pay for a bike helmet fee, or for a marriage license, you would not get that building permit. So those are why those are exempted.
Were you exempted those, though?
But as you know, we had that issue with various license renewals at the end of the year, and this would just make it more clear.
How do you not pay your marriage license? You don't get your certificate unless you pay for it. That's what I'm kind of, I'm just...
I could put about...
I live in Utah. I guess you're right, bouncing checks.
Dog licenses is a huge one.
Yeah, I don't know, that one, there's been some issues, Sean, you may have run into this too, there's been a couple issues lately for the animal, that committee I was on, where there was dog license issues, where they weren't paid, and people had a number of other things they were doing wrong, and they would have liked to have a little teeth.
No pun intended.
That's awful.
My response to lack of licensing is, it's a state law, and people can be summoned for failure to pay their dog license, so it's not out of the realm of possibility, if we have five or 600 unlicensed dogs, to send them a notice saying they'll have to appear in court. That's what the statute provides for. Most communities don't do it, some do them every five or six years, but this would be another remedy in which to do it.
I'm confused about this exemption, I don't want to beat this to death here, but I'm reading this, and it says, so the town can deny an application for a permit, so your deck example, okay? If you owe taxes on your house, you can, this says we can deny a building permit, correct?
Yep.
The statute you've already accepted allows you to do that, on real estate.
But then this says, except such bylaws shall not apply to open burning, bicycle helmets, dog licenses, marriage licenses. I read that to say, to mean, if you owe taxes, then the town cannot deny you a marriage license.
You have to take the tax thing out of it. This is not for real estate. This is any fee, any permit or whatever that the town made, that somebody made owe the town. We would not issue them anything until they satisfied that outstanding fee.
Except...
Except those ones. Now, you don't need to have those exemptions.
So we would give them, so you could owe money, and we would still give you a marriage license?
Yes, or bike helmet.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay, that's, that makes sense.
So the question is, do we want to remove any of these exemptions?
No, for safety reasons, we don't want to send someone on the street, you know?
No, I agree with the bicycle helmet.
Safety and, no?
Marriage license, we don't want to stop you getting married.
And cookies and bake sales.
They may make suggestions, but we don't have to.
I mean, I don't want that coming.
So I just put your folks as a, let them do all the hard work.
Not a bad one, it's a good one. I'll move Article 18, as written.
And I'll second it.
I'll third it.
Through the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Utility polls?
This is at the request of Mr. Bangert. Again, language we borrowed from another community, and I think it's fairly self-explanatory that really, we could adopt a general bylaw that says, when one goes, the other one comes in, the others go to go.
I think Mr. Danahue should make this motion, because I know this is something you've been really harping on for a while.
This is the most annoying, so people understand, basically, when you're driving around town, you see two poles that are sistered up to each other, one of which is the old one, and the other one's the new one. The utility companies have to take it down within 90 days, and, you know, otherwise, I mean, they've been poles all over the place, and we're trying to get them to take it down. It's, it's really annoying, it's a danger, you know, frankly, utility companies are being lazy about it, so take it down.
I'll second that motion.
I'll move for that one.
Hold and second it, but before we, we think it's too easy, Norman.
Does it have to be a whole pole?
Whole pole, nothing but the pole.
The reason I, Al, is coming down...
Yeah, I understand.
... railroad to North City to a post guy, I happened to look up, and there was a brand-new pole, and another piece of a pole dangling next to it, maybe about four or five feet tall, where they hadn't connected the two over, yet they cut the pole, and left the rest of it hanging in there.
And segment of a pole to me.
Is that a double pole?
We're going to try to figure out now whether we want to include segment of a pole.
Because we may see that replicated, if this goes into...
What it would be, Norman, is it's a removal of an existing pole, so I, the existing pole, whether that's a, it's the, whatever was there originally is existing, that's gone, you got it, that's the existing pole, it's got to go for the, so the new pole can get in there.
The existing pole or part thereof.
Next to the north pole, and the south pole.
Okay. Motion's been made, the second and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous. General bylaws, snow removal bylaw.
This one's at the request of Chief of Police and Mr. Bangert, which basically compels homeowners with sidewalks in front of their property to clear them of snow within 24 hours. This is a very common bylaw, and it's being suggested for adoption here.
So it's legal?
Absolutely legal, if you adopt it.
Homeowners and commercial store owners also, or just, it says...
Tenants of property, it says.
Tenants of property, so the tenant and the...
So either the homeowner or tenants of property, there.
So on a commercial building, the tenant, the store owner, would be responsible, not the owner of the building, the store?
That's what this bylaw says. We looked at several, actually, and I had something that was a little softer that I had, as health hadly, but Chief weighed in, and I deferred to his recommendation.
I have two issues, I have two issues with this. First is, I know from a, from a legal standpoint, the law of snow, it's called natural, a natural accumulation of snow and ice, is presently, there's a, there's a case before the Supreme Judicial Court that could change the law altogether. What this bylaw in essence says is that people are obligated to clear paths on sidewalks, that's under our general town ordinance. If the law as it stands, if you don't touch the snow, you're not liable for doing anything. The moment we're obligating them to do something, they could potentially be liable, that's the present law. It may change. So I'm kind of like reluctant to vote on it, although I totally understand it, it's a liability issue that everybody in town could be potentially held liable for something if somebody slips and falls on the sidewalks. The other thing is, Sean pointed out, is we're also now telling people they got to clear out the fire hydrant, or obligating them. I think they should, but I just, I don't know, is that something that we want to tell people that they're obligated to do?
No. You know why?
Again, liability, I go to.
No, no, it has nothing to do with that. I think it's good training, and it lets the fire department guys know, especially the new ones, where the hydrants are. In the event there's a fire, they know where the hydrant is. They've been doing it for years, the fire department will go around and shovel them out, you know, after the storm, all right? Then the guys know where they are. Did Ricky Judge have a say in this? Because I'd be surprised if he'd go along with that.
But if the store owner shovels it out, they'll be able to see it.
I'm just, I'm thinking more or less it's on a resident, you know what I mean, just so the fire department knows where they are, it just...
Could we ask, did I think checking in with Chief Judge might be a good idea here?
Sure, I mean, it's the board's discretion, it's Joe Warren, and these are just recommended to you by the various departments, and the general bylaw...
I'd like to learn more about this one later.
I'm not, I'm not totally against it, I just, you know...
I mean, I think it's an obligation, I would hope that store owners wouldn't have to be mandated to clear in front of their store. I know if I owned a store, I'd do everything possible to clear the snow to get customers to come in.
Yeah, right.
It's also residential.
It's also residential, which, you know, there's a lot of people walking to schools, et cetera, and if you plowed the sidewalk, walks down to a certain house, and then he is, that homeowner doesn't clear the sidewalk, and puts the children out in the street, you're going to defeat the whole purpose of clearing the sidewalks.
So I think we could have the Chiefs and Al at the next meeting, maybe, because it's last night.
Yeah, maybe just come in, even with, even with a memo, you know, we don't want to bring too many people in, you know?
I have a question about this, too, and I don't mean to pile on, but it says owners and/or tenants, so that to me seems vague, who's the bottom line? So if the town, if we see something that's not cleared, how do, who do we contact? We contact both? We contact one, leave it up to them to figure out, or, and then is there, what's the penalty and all that?
The owner is a homeowner, or the tenant would be the person in rental property.
That's right.
So whoever's occupying the home, I would say is responsible for that.
Okay.
If it's a tenant, it's a renter.
The person on site, essentially.
Depends on the lease, right, John?
I was going to say, it depends on the lease, then, depends on whether or not the landlord obligates the tenant, or whether or not the tenant says it's landlord's duty.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and is there, and what if someone's in violation?
Well, that's the $100,000 question, but we do have a mechanism for doing it, it's the non-criminal disposition, disposition, well, you know...
Yep.
I mean, it's, you know, I can understand the trouble of the, of the fire, it's going to be, it's a tough call again, now, I don't want to, you know, compound the questions on this, but when are you obligated, just after an inch, or it has to be five inches, or it has to be three inches? I mean, that's just adding, let's, recommendations, go ahead.
I just was going to say, I mean, we just voted to support some more sidewalks, so if I own a house on Holland Street, and I have 100 feet of frontage, and it's a sidewalk, now I'm obligated to clear that whole sidewalk?
Yeah.
Even if it's in the town's right wing?
That would be right, as written, it says that is under the control of the town of Suchot.
That abuts the property, it can be in the town way.
So we'll take a look at this, we'll hold off on this. Norman?
With the fire hydrants, can you mandate that those people who have a fire hydrant in front of their home are mandated to clear that fire hydrant?
Well, that's what this is talking.
Where other people on each side, houses maybe two or three down the block, aren't mandated, aren't under that mandate, because they don't have a fire hydrant in front of their home? Can you do that?
That's what this is.
That's what this says.
Yeah, I know you don't...
Now, again, we get into the whole front of the home, and what if, what if it's in the middle of two pieces of property, and, you know, I think it's, I think this is raising more questions, Max?
Yeah, if it's one person and not somebody else, it could actually be problematic.
I think when you have, if there's a cast of folks looking at this, I think my, I have the same question regarding sewer drains, I've got one in a hydrant on my property, I mean, it's a question I always have come up, so I think if, if the issue's being discussed in the broader scope of things, I could certainly see someone say, what about a sewer drain? Because it backs up in front of my house, unless...
Is this causing more problems than it's solving?
Yeah.
And I don't know the answer to that, but we'll find out, all right? Why don't we postpone this till a future date, as they say, all right?
Squashkin.
Squashkin.
Yep, nevermind.
Pond. Easements. This is, Mr. Guy, the sewer project, I believe, yeah?
Article 21, all moved as written? Seconded?
Moved as written and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous. Public housing trust land transfer.
I think we're done.
We want to postpone this, postpone that.
We're done.
Zoning bylaw revision.
That's a later date.
That's also postponed, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, we got through that. Annual license renewals.
Moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the common viculars licenses for Coffee Corner and for Harbor Scoops for 2010.
Second.
Ice cream.
Motion's been made, the second and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous, next?
Moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the license for the Davis parking lot at Hummer Rock for 2010.
Second.
Motion's been made, the second and all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Appointments, constable?
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Marilyn Johnson to the Beautification Commission?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Kathy Meeker to the Cable Television Committee?
Second.
Motion's been made, the second and all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Nathaniel Green and Andre Fajat as constables in the town of Situate?
Just before we go on, Nathaniel Green wasn't able to come tonight, right?
Right, he is able to come on, on March 2nd, if you wait until you need him, that's up to you.
Sure, I'll retract, vote to appoint just Andre Fajat.
Second. Motion's been made, the seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Town administrator's report?
I'll be brief, noting the hour, you have the period ending December 31st for the financial trend monitoring, just some highlights, our tax collections are a little ahead of the same period over January 2009, which is very good, slight increases in tax liens and foreclosures, but as noted, the permits and inspectional fees are still considerably lower than last year, and actually, much lower than two years ago. On the expenditure side, there's some good news on utilities in terms of electricity and gas. Snow and ice, the jury's still out, but so far, so good, and the unemployment account will officially go into deficit this month, and we're projecting 106,000 shortfall through June 30.
We have to do, you write this report like periodically, so, but to town meetings, so we'll know where...
Yeah, there's, if you saw the draft special town meeting, Warren, I have it as one of the things we're going to have to move more money into in the special.
And the only other one that stuck out was the overtime for the fire. I know it went down, but it's still...
He has money for that, and I think we've talked about this in terms of if our revenues improve at all with local aid. Essentially, what's happening is he has two funded but unfilled firefighter positions to the tune of about 106,000, so that is what he's been using to pay the overtime. Those positions, as you know, are gone in FY 11, so there'll be some real challenges there, but some of them, I believe, strongly can be addressed with management changes, but also, if we do get more local aid, that's the first place, I think I've told the board, the fire department will be the first add back in. We met with the, we have, we're designated as applicant in training, I guess, for the Green Communities Initiative. We had a long meeting last week about the necessary things that we have to do to enable the town to be one of the first communities certified. I think we're making good progress, that allows the town to become in line for considerable money and grants that the Commonwealth is funding, and you can't access them unless you're designated as a green community. We're first out of the gate, there was just a funding round, there was $30 million, I think, in the first round, and only, you know, those communities that, you know, have sort of put some of these several hoops to jump in place. One of them is adopting the new stretch code, which Neil has been to training about, which is having builders put green elements into building construction, things like that, which will see a future town meeting, so some additional work on that, that Laura Harbottle has sort of been administering. And then the last thing, tonight, the board voted, the building committee for the school department, the new regs for the state require a certified purchasing official to be on that, we're very fortunate, because Kevin just passed it, but under the charter, I serve as a chief procurement officer, and if we're actually going to be into substantial renovation and construction, it, I think, behooves the board and me to get some professional development. I know a lot about 30B, but I need to start taking these courses, it's five courses over whatever number of years to finally be a CCPO, so the first of these is in, it's about $450, but it's a four-day class, and they're each four days over the next couple of years.
That's in Boston, is it?
They're offered in Boston, down the Cape, Worcester, and Huntington, Mass.
Where?
I am taking the one in Huntington, Mass, which is near Conway.
Yeah.
The IG's office called me and said, I think you checked the wrong thing. You live in Situate. And I said, no, I checked it out.
No one ever takes it, Huntington, you must have made a mistake.
So I'll, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Uh.
That's it.
That's it. Other business, starting with whoever?
Sure. Uh, just to let you know that I had mentioned this before, there is a St. Patrick's Day parade. Congratulations to the Chamber of Commerce and for all those people in the subcommittee. Uh, it is going forward. Um, I was going to notice, walking around here, um, Tricia, I don't know if it's you, the lights, great.
It's Al.
Al's doing a great job. I just wanted to say if Al's watching, good job. I walked into the selectman's room, light turned on. I was like, wow, kind of spooky.
Do you have motion sensors now in a number of office hallways?
It's looking good. Looking great. Um, the other thing is, um, I'll briefly, Joe and I went to a meeting on Saturday for seawalls at the G A R and we certainly addressed different issues that people raised concerning the seawalls and the concerns raised, and I think it was very productive. Uh, Joe did a good, you know, obviously spoke to it and, um, I, I spoke a little bit and, um, um, obviously people raised concerns about the money and trying to replace them and do something and I think it was very productive, so we'll see what happens from there. The last thing I was going to say is Thursday, which is the eighteenth, pitchers and catchers, so spring is coming.
Yes.
That's it. Thank you.
Just one thing, Tricia or maybe Joe knows, a couple residents have asked me about their, their season's, their season pass holders for Willow's Walk. And typically they get their application or the renewal for the following year by December. Are we revisiting?
Yeah.
What, okay.
That's coming up, the next meeting, I think.
I got a meeting with Bob Domb. He couldn't do it because there's a fee increase.
Okay, that's what.
Tied to the recommended budget that we have.
All right, that's what this person, and I said that's probably what it is. So, all right. That, that was all I had, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just a, a quick comment, high school sports, both your hockey and basketball teams had great seasons. In fact, Situate is ranked like number seventeenth in the state in basketball. Um, and their playoffs are coming up in the next couple of weeks, so they should have home games, so get out there and support them.
The only thing I have is, um, you know, when we bought, when the town bought the Situate Marine Park, there are a bunch of reasons for it, including, you know, enhancing recreation and increasing the marina and open space, but maintaining a commercial boatyard. So I was, I was really pleased at the last waterways meeting to learn that, um, a lobster boat got hauled out about two and a half weeks ago now and, uh, Situate Boatyard pulled it out because they had some engine problems or mechanical difficulties. They were able to pull the boat out within a couple of days' notice, do the work on it and have that boat taken care of. If that boatyard hadn't been there, that fisherman would have had to take that boat probably down to Plymouth or some other location, which obviously would be, you know, a real hard thing to get a disabled vessel in this weather, out of the harbor, down to some other place and put that business somewhere else. So to my knowledge, that's the first, you know, wintertime haulout that had that boatyard not been there, wouldn't have been able to do it. So the plan is working and, uh, I commend the guys at the Situate Boat Works for, for, for doing that. And, uh, it's already starting to, you know, reap rewards for our commercial fleet. That's it, Mr. Chair.
It was a good-sized boat.
Yeah, it was a big boat.
Yeah. I have nothing, so we'll move on to correspondence. Is it correspondence or minutes?
Uh, I don't think we have anything.
I don't think we have any correspondence. We'll move to minutes.
Move the minutes to January sixth, two thousand and nine.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded, all in minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, that's unanimous.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to adjourn the meeting at nine thirty P. M.
I'll second that, too.
Motion been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, folks.
It's unanimous. Good night and thank you all.